Yeah, we'd love to see them more often.
No, they were sending the invitation.
Looking forward to spoiling grandkids. I don't have them here. Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm getting out to New York in July for a couple of days, so I'll see a couple of them and then catch two on the west coast. And they're actually, one lives in
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you mean downstairs? Yeah, yeah.
The other one lives in Long Beach.
Tom, I want to show you something. Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
In two years.
Yeah, my son is so happy. Miami Springs, CNI High is going to have it at the It's fair?
Okay.
Let me find that, I'll call you. I want to show you. I want to show you something.
Was found on
No.
I thought so. I know that he wanted to Yeah, he was going to ask him to do the invitation.
So that when he sees the real one over here. Yep. So there's absolutely nothing here. Right.
Were you?
Yeah, and he's still on the list, so.
Mike, I'll get a buffalo robe.
You want my jacket? The one I have, the blue one I have in the office? It's locked.
Thank you.
She got a shot.
Yeah, mine as well. You're my phone. Thank you for taking care of me.
You should do, you should do.
Your headshot, she's dressed.
Don't worry about it. No, no, don't worry about it. After? Will you be there later? Oh, no.
Totally. Same real deal.
Yeah. I don't know why you want me to look.
Becky, look over here. Becky, look over here.
The poses are running off.
Pick, pick the Pick the one you want.
Oh, okay. No, I'm just tired. Like ache or anything. Down in it, that way. Do you want to speak on it?
It's fine.
Open forum, sure.
Yeah.
I'm really bad, like picking pictures.
I'll bring it for you.
No. I don't need it right away, but just later in the meeting.
Okay, your picture's taken. Going like this.
But just for me, you don't have to print them for forward it. Myra had printed them for me and I forgot to write them off.
I saw it there and I didn't, I didn't even Thank you.
Huh? Yeah. You send them?
Okay.
So six, six, one.
First time?
Yeah.
You're right. Mike, you're right.
Twenty-nine.
Is it?
Yes.
Really?
Oh, on open forum? Okay.
I think you have something else.
I'll bring it to you.
Go, Maria.
Oh, my friend too.
Here she is.
Nice.
Hello, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Erica. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Best?
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Present.
Councilman Bahad?
Here.
Councilman Vazquez?
Okay, stand down, please, for the invocation, Vice Mayor of Best.
Well, before we do this, I'd just like to mention that Father Al Faro from Blessed Trinity was supposed to be here to do the invocation today on my behalf. He's not able to make it. We're going to do it again on June 5th at Blessed Trinity. So, in honor of Police Appreciation Month, and the flag is flying outside City Hall, in the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Saint Michael the Archangel, defend us in battle. Defend us. Be our, be our defense against the wickedness and snares of the devil. Hail Holy Prince, through your intercession, the powerful mighty God, you cast into hell Satan and all the evil spirits which prowl for the world seeking the ruin of souls. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and today it's a really exciting meeting because we're honored to have the mayor of Miami-Dade County, the new mayor, Mayor Levine, Daniela Levine-Cava. And I just want everyone to know that Mayor Cava is the one that reached out to us and said she wanted to be here at this meeting, which is just so impressive, and I'm sure you're visiting other municipalities, but as far as I know, and I just asked our vice mayor, he's been on the council for a very, very long time, and he's not aware of ever a Miami-Dade County mayor wanting to come to, to speak to the council and to our city, so
Never happened, Mayor.
So it's great pleasure to have you here.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Well, I was just thinking, actually, I do want to reach out to other councils, but this is actually the first one I'm visiting. So you're my number one.
Oh, my goodness, what an honor.
Number one.
Yeah, very special. Well, it's a great honor to be with all of you, and I've had the pleasure to meet many of you, but not all, and certainly to your mayor, who I've known for a while, and I'm very grateful. She's a county employee, former county employee, so she did great work also at the county. But, and to the members of the public who are present as well, it's a great privilege to be, to be with you. I know you certainly have things that you would like us to do at the county, and I'm here to hear about those things, but I do want to say for starters, the most important thing is to have good working relationships. And I did tell people, I was pushing the reset button on county-city relations when I came in as mayor, because we have to do this together. The issues are really regional in nature. Cities have roles, the county has role, and we, we can only really tackle the big challenges that we have and also take advantage of the opportunities if we, if we work together. So through the League of Cities, I've participated in quite a few of the virtual meetings, reached out to work together around issues of COVID protection, vaccination, policing issues, and basically to let you know that I am here for you, I've instructed my departments that our relationship should not be a transactional one, it should not be a regulatory one solely. Yes, there are those issues, but really more importantly, it's a partnership for us to work together for the, for the benefit of the larger community. So with that, I do know that you do have some concerns, I'm well aware, and I'm happy to discuss those, but just mostly to let you know that I will be here for you. You can put me on speed dial, I do answer my, my phone calls, my texts, my emails personally, and I have for you a great liaison, and that is Tomas Alcala, and Tomas?
There he is.
Hopefully you've had a chance to get to know him. And because I'm so dedicated to our relations with the thirty-four municipalities, whereas the previous mayor had three liaisons, I have four, so they can really double down, spend some good time, get to know the issues, and I know he's, he, because he gives me a weekly report of what it is that he's doing, I've been able to follow your issues, and I know that he's reached out and, and had meetings with, with many of you, so we're here to serve. I could tell you a little bit about my overall agenda, or we could get into the things that are on your minds, as you wish.
I think we would like to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I think the best way to organize my thoughts are to tell you that, of course, I've been fighting COVID, you know, with that mighty shield protecting everybody best we can during the times when we needed to be so isolated. Now we're having this gradual opening up, which feels really revolutionary, I have to say, really bizarre to take off our masks, but that's because of the hard work that the community has done to be safe and the high vaccination rate. In fact, I haven't had a chance to look at the newest figures that came out today, but we are doing better than almost everywhere in Florida. We have overall more than fifty percent of the population, that's across all age groups. Those over sixty-five, it's eighty-two percent, and for those over sixteen, it's almost sixty percent have been vaccinated. So we're definitely making great progress, but we're not there yet. Vaccine really is the only way out of this, this situation and getting back to some normalcy, but we have been able to relax some of our precautions, like relaxing the masking rules, because we're told that with the high rate of vaccination, plus those who've been exposed. By the way, when I talked to Dr. Peter Page, our chief medical officer that I appointed on day one, he says, he always adds the figure of the percentage of people who've actually had COVID, because of course those people have some antibodies as well, so that boosts our overall community immunity. But after that, because I do see, and after the three, the four critical areas, I call them the four Es. E for the economy, E for the environment, E for equity, and E for engagement. And on the economy, we are doing really much better than we could have ever expected. Of course, so many are still struggling, many are out of work, many have lost businesses, many have lost lives. Six thousand, six thousand have lost their lives just in Miami-Dade County. But I think we have so many brighter days ahead, tourism is on the rebound, we have new businesses flocking here, we have, our small businesses have proven themselves to be adaptive, and many gotten back on their feet, and we've been able to provide support. So we're working hard, doubling down, and with the new American Rescue Plan, we'll be putting together a plan also to invest in infrastructure. So that is critical for everything in the future, and we will have the benefit, and if the American Jobs Plan passes, that will be more money for infrastructure, and those are our good jobs, as well as building our future more resiliently. In the environmental arena, I am the water warrior. I love your beautiful emblem for your town that celebrates water, and water is our lifeline, of course, and water is, is very vulnerable here in South Florida. Saltwater intrusion in our wells, the rising seas, the, the pollution in our bay, so many septic and sewer problems that we're working hard to rebuild, so so many challenges, not just to our water, but our overall environment, and we've worked really hard to reduce our carbon footprint with electrification of our fleet, more solar, our resilience strategy, and I know that you are part of our three oh five resilience plan, which is great, we're all united, an example of our regional planning, and many other things, shore power that we're bringing to the port, many other really good things, and of course transit, I have to say, I'm going to include it here, both environment and economy, we need to improve our transit, and you know, we're working hard on that. And then as far as equity goes, we want all communities to benefit, many have been left behind, and especially as we rebuild, this is the opportunity to get it right and, and spread opportunities throughout our community, whether it's through apprenticeship programs, internships. Now we have the Peace and Prosperity Plan funded through the FTX naming right of the arena, ninety million dollars over nineteen years, and we're launching with the board's approval, hopefully next Wednesday, a very significant investment, especially in our young people, to keep them away from a life of crime and give them productive future, a sense of a better future. And then finally, on engagement, I believe that government is a trust by the people that pay their taxes and elect their officials, and we have to do good and make them proud and be accountable, and that means engaging our public to see what government is doing, to give them an opportunity to participate. So I have done my, all my work prior to this, outside of government, trying to make government more responsive, and now as, as mayor, we've launched the biggest community engagement program in the history of the county, Thrive Three Oh Five, the results of which will be reported probably next week, I'm pretty excited about it, and we'll put what I call the people's choice priorities forward as part of our strategic plan. So that is a quick version of what we're working on when we're not fighting COVID. So, but again, we can only do it if we work together, oh, septic to sewer as an example of how we need to really work together to prevent pollution and, and convert, and we have the opportunity to draw down, hopefully federal, but also state dollars to work together to, to solve that problem. So that's a little overview of the things that we're working on, and I take any questions? And I know you have issues of annexation, your policing issues, your, the corrections center, I know those are things that are top of your agenda as well.
Yep.
Well, I just want to say again, I, I'm so impressed, and I mean that from the heart. For an elected official, you, you definitely walk the talk and talk the talk and, and believe in that, so just reaching out to our small community, and especially to hear that this is the first community you reach out to, that's really quite an honor, so I, I think that this is an indication that we will be working together. We're all here in Miami-Dade County, and I feel very much like you do. You know, these, these borders that define one area from the other, nature doesn't know those borders. You know, the water flows from one area to the next area to the, when there's, or the birds fly between them, and we're the ones defining these borders and then making regulations that apply on this side of the road and not on that side, so looking at it from a countywide perspective is just really refreshing, and, and one thing that you said with the equity, I think that that's an issue that's very dear to me as far as for our community. We're a very small community, three square miles, as you know, but very historic. We were incorporated in nineteen twenty-six, and because of all the growth that's going on around us, which we value because it gives us opportunities to experience all sorts of culture and all sorts of, you know, adventures and, and things, but we still want to retain our character as much as possible, and it seems, when we're talking about equity with other communities, because we're a smaller community, sometimes it seems like we don't appear, or in the past have not appeared as significant to the county in issues that may be detrimental to us or significantly impacting us in a negative way, and I think that that's part of, of the equity equation that you're talking about. Also, it's not just the socioeconomic, it's, you know, the, the reality of the size of the community and how they're impacted by what's, you know, happening around them.
If I could also add that you live here because of your quality of life, you have a very unique historic, charming community. It's always a delight for me when I come into this community, really fills me up with a sense of, of pride that we have neighborhoods like this, and I, for me, it, it is the diversity of the county that makes it so special. So, you know, obviously, we want to do everything we, we can to support you to thrive.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll open it up for Vice Mayor Best.
Mayor Cava, thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I think that means an awful lot to folks in the audience, as well as us up here as officials. I liked your statement earlier about the, the, we are number one in the state of Florida, sixty percent, I mean, that, that kind of rings, you know? And, and actually, it's plus plus based on what Dr. Peter said, right? I mean, because those
Yes, right, exactly.
So it's added.
Yes.
That's a plus. Your four Es are top-notch, totally get that. It's a takeaway for everybody, go home and think about that. And how to, how to coordinate with the county. Mayor, my one question to you would be, based on some of the stuff that's coming out of Tallahassee right now, what is your, what is your view on the infringement on home rule, which seems to be really eroding us here in, in Miami-Dade County?
Well, it's very upsetting to me that our, even our local elected officials don't have confidence. When I say our local, our state representatives from this county do not seem to have confidence in our ability to run our local communities. It's very disheartening. Some of them plan to come onto the county commission. I wonder if they'll be singing a different song by the time they come onto county commission, but you know, I know that a lot of this comes from the top, you know, it's, it's a hierarchical structure in Tallahassee, and obviously the state government wants to control as much as they can, but it is very, very unfortunate, especially this session, when it was so hard for people to participate in the government because the halls were closed, travel was limited. It seemed to give the special ammunition to those that would take away local control. So we do have some lawsuits, and actually, that's another thing, maybe you read in the Herald, they were saying like, some people don't even care that it will be challenged and that these laws will be overturned. It's sort of making a statement that they're making that satisfies some people. But for us, you know, at the county, we have a very, very strong anti-preemption policy. Anything that, you know, what is it, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck, and you know, there's a lot of things going on that we have been fighting against, and a number of things were avoided, even so, so it could have been a lot worse.
Mayor, thanks so much for that very candid answer.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Vazquez?
Welcome.
Thank you.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations to your newly-elected members as well. Yes.
And I'm not one of them. Yeah, I am one of them, but I'm not, I'm not, I was going to say, not the youngest. I appreciate the list that you mentioned of issues that we face. I just wanted to add one that's multi-layered, I'm sure you're aware in some ways, and it has to do with the hotels on Northwest thirty-fourth Street. It's a variety of issues, we have the hidden views, it has some crime in there.
Yes, yes.
Et cetera, et cetera, and burning our, oh, burning up the resource. Forty percent of the falls into the hotels. We're not getting enough revenues to help us with that. But I also wanted to add that some of the hotels have also shown to be not good neighbors. And in fact, there are two residents sitting here right now who are, who are on the other side, if you will, of those issues. And so I believe it's quality of life, Miami Springs is generally good, but there's some of those neighbors whose houses are up against all those areas of the hotels, particularly on the Nola Drive and at the Soto and the Leon. I just went by there again this evening, so we are taking some ventures, we're going to be having some discussions about that soon, but it, it, you know, hotels are proposed to be economic engines, and we're certainly concerned for economic development here, it's on our agenda tonight, we'll talk about some boards, but there has to be a balance, and it can't be at the cost of quality of life of some of the residents in our cities, so I just wanted to add that to your list of things that you will be hearing about from our mayor.
Yes, thank you, and I did have an opportunity to speak to the mayor about some of those issues during my campaign, and I feel quite and I feel quite remiss because I, at the time, I brought it to the attention of homeless trust and the police department, and honestly, since I've been mayor, I have not followed up. So I need to do that, the proportionality of, you know, basically, the point was made, you know, what's the fair distribution of the bed tax dollars?
Yes.
So that you can support programming, and I think it's a very valid point. And, you know, I know for homelessness in general, because of the reduction of the bed tax, there's, you know, fewer revenues to meet the need, but that to be said, I think there should be some consideration given for the situation you have here, and I, Tomas has really great follow-up capacity, so we will, we will follow up and try to get some action.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Give the chair? Yes. Well, welcome, Mayor.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bravo.
I'm sorry?
No, no, just I wanted to make sure the mayor knew your name.
It's so nice to see you here. I've been, I follow your Instagram page, and it's just so refreshing to see all the activities that you're doing on the daily, from, I don't know, seven AM to God knows when, and it's just really fun. I've learned through your page. There's a lot of knickknacks about Miami-Dade that I did not know about, and thanks to you, I've been exposed to it, so it's, it's really nice. Tomas reached out to me within two days of being admitted to office, and I, the connectivity already started from that call. He was very warm, welcoming, and the fact that we had already a liaison reaching out to us in such a short amount of time gave me hope that we can really connect and do beautiful things here together, and you being here live is very, it's, it's, it's showing that we can definitely work together, and, you know, you're at a distance, but you're not at a distance, so thank you for opening that door.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
To be able to approach you, because you seem like a very approachable person, and it's, it's, it's nice to feel that, so thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, thank you. I, I do know that we are not going to be able to solve these problems if we don't work together. together.
Councilman Fehet.
So again, thank you. Welcome, welcome to our beautiful city, and thank you for being here. I think, I think it's important that your being here, I think, just shows how much that you're willing to be here, to listen and be available. So we can't thank you enough for that. And I think you mentioned something in response to Councilman Vasquez about the homeless trust, and that is one thing that we've discussed a great deal on the council, is the fact that there's, there's five hotels that the homeless trust uses to house those, you know, citizens that are in transition, they like to call them. But two of them are here in Miami Springs, but they house eighty percent of the counties' homeless people that are under the services of the homeless trust, and we know that.
In hotels.
In hotels.
Yes.
Right.
As compared to in the shelters, is the point. But for the hotel population.
Of the hotel, of the ones that are in hotels, they're in our two, eighty percent of them are in our two hotels versus the other three that are in the county, which is a little disproportionate in terms of the number. So that's something that, that has kind of been something for us to, to kind of deal with, just because, as Councilman Vasquez was saying, it does, it does require those hotels require extra attention from, from our police. And, and we know that anything that, that could be done to help us, that would be, that would be beneficial. I think also, though, the board of commissioners should be commended, because I know that when the TGK expansion came up, there was, you know, the, the original plan was to expand the jail here. And I know because of, you know, the, the support at the eleventh hour from, you know, the commissioners, I think, heard from the residents, and then they came back just recently at a previous council meeting, and they talked about the compromise that they made, where they're going to be building more jail and beds further away. And we were very, very happy to hear that. And that's, that's a credit to the fact that the commissioners did hear, and that the county was responsive to, to the concerns of the residents. So that's, you guys are to be commended for that. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the support that you give us. So once again, thank you.
And I do want to mention that the, moving the new jail to the Metro West was something I always supported.
Of course.
I was never in favor of expansion here, and actually, I would like to see even more retraction here. So hopefully, we'll be able to come up with ways of reducing our overall jail population and retire the facility.
Thank you.
Mayor, so just to recap with some of the major issues, and we can certainly work with Tomas, and I don't want to burden you with, you know, with detail with this, but the one is the, with the homeless trust and having the eighty percent of their hotel rooms in Miami Springs, of the hotel rooms that they provide for the homeless, we're a tiny community, we're more than willing to do our fair share for any challenge that, you know, that the county has. But we feel that it really has to be equitably distributed, these challenges that are difficult that, that pose such an impact on a community. It has to be equitably distributed throughout all the municipalities, and it seems like very often, issues in the TGK was one, that it was going to be right here again, where we already have TGK. I know some commissioners were saying, well, it's, you know, no one wants it in their backyard. Well, we already have it in our backyard, TGK. So, you know, what we're asking is not to double up in our backyard. And I think those are all issues that are important to us. The annexation, as you know, we've talked about that. A lot of the communities, municipalities, like Doral, for instance, is allowed to annex and to grow. We're very restricted in size. So the annexation that we're asking for is a logical expanse of land that we've had two referendums, our citizens have voted in favor of it each time. And it's really the only accessible land that we can annex to assist us. We have, as you may know, a very high mileage rate because we're a residential community. And this would allow us to take some of the burden off of our residents and our community, and also allow us to grow like other communities have been allowed to grow. So those are all issues, and, you know, we'll talk with Tomas. And the other one is the bed tax issue that, there again, the bed tax that is collected and goes to the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau for tourist development is used to attract tourism to all areas of Miami Dade County. When I was first elected here to the council, I worked with the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, you know, and brought this to their attention. We're not getting, we're, our community is providing the tax base, but we're not getting anything back. And so they did a lovely job of, Bill Talbert and Ron Rolando did a lovely job of making a visitor's center in our lobby and, you know, working really hard, what they do with other cities to attract tourism here. It didn't move the needle at all. It was a very nice effort by them, but it was not, not effective, you know, because of our nature of our community. So we're still at the same, same point where our bed taxes are, from our hotels, are collected, are sent to attract tourism and to Miami Dade County. It doesn't work for us in attracting tourism here. We're a small community, there's not that many choices of restaurants and things, even though we're going to work on that. But forty percent, as you may know, forty percent of our police services and responses are at these hotels. So that's time that the police is, forty percent of their, of their time is not available to address the issues that are important to our citizens. And we hear that a lot since the four years that I've been on the council. I can tell you, that's one of the biggest one, where is the police presence? You know, they used to see the police presence, they no longer see it, and it's because the police are at the hotels. So the issue there is that if we're providing part of attracting tourism to Miami, should be providing for their security also. And so we would like some equitable way for us to continue to do the services that we do at the hotels, but to be compensated for that, for our police services. And I think, and I know we've thrown a lot at you, but those are the major issues that I think, what you, you know, discussing with Home Rule, that's an ongoing, you know, with us, we're, as, as every community is by the legislation, sometimes it's happening in Tallahassee where they want to preempt us from, you know, from governing things that should be on a, on a citywide basis. They're unique to cities. But again, you're being here and listening, and, you know, I've always been very impressed with you from the time you entered the county commission with your environmental stance. You're, I know you're very, very proactive on protecting our environment, and that's something that definitely has no borders. You know, it's, the South Florida environment is, is one big, great, big area, and anything that happens in Broward County affects us in like worldwide. So I really appreciate your stance and your interest in, in really being proactive.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if I may say, I will look into all of these in more detail, the fair share of the bed tax, the issue of the disproportionate impact on your policing, the, obviously, it seems for right now, the corrections issues are somewhat under control.
Yes, Director Junior spoke at our last meeting, and we were just, I told him, there's been a collective sigh of relief here after we hear that you're moving to Metro West, and the administrative offices being here at TGK is a good match with the courthouses.
But I do just want to clarify something about the annexation, because I'm seeing here that, that the Planning Advisory Board is awaiting a letter requesting to move forward since there had been a request for deferral. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's from Mayor Dino, and my understanding is he's already submitted that.
Okay.
That that's been submitted.
So your annexation request.
What happened is several.
Still need to proceed to me, is what's happening.
And we reached an agreement with several cities, Doral, Medley, Virginia Gardens, and Miami Springs reached an agreement some years back on some different Donut Hill areas that Miami Dade County had, that, you know, how we would incorporate, who would, I mean, excuse me, who would annex each one. And we all reached an agreement between the four cities, and each city is seeking to annex certain areas.
So I don't know what the reason was why the Planning Advisory Board didn't recommend it, but I can assure you that I will do a deep dive into it. I don't know when it's coming to me for review, but I will find out. It isn't on my desk. I spend every day at least an hour reviewing items and signing off on reports and all manner of things. And, and I want to be sure that you get a timely response to your request.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is there any other questions? Well, Mayor, we have, we would like to take a photo with you, if we may.
Thank you so much. I would love that. Are we going to be masked or unmasked? Which you're comfortable with. I'm double vaccinated and very comfortable.
By the way, we have Pfizer vaccine first dose all this week, except Thursday, I think, at our city community center.
Excellent. And I know we're available to go wherever there are arms without shots, so.
And we have, especially because I know that, I was very, I don't know if people realize that the mayor kayaking over the Christmas, over the holidays, over the New Year's holidays, kayaking, but how far did you go in the Everglades and your husband?
Well, Thanksgiving was when I actually was COVID. I didn't have that. Wednesday night, and I had only three days.
Three days through the Everglades. I mean, this is so great. So we have a sea on the side of Miami Springs, and you can see with the water that, and also a cup of coffee and a little sea.
That's so lovely. Thank you.
All right, and then I'll move it back.
Social media is a good way to follow. Thank you. And we'll be on Instagram. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you for coming, man.
Okay, what a refreshing.
Indeed.
Different direction from our commissioner, from our mayor, actually taking a personal interest and making the trip here. She could have very easily asked some of us to meet with her there, or one of us, or something, and made it much easier for her, but to come at seven o'clock at night on a Monday night and speak to our community, I think is just really, not just impressive, but shows her intent is to be very, very inclusive for, for all the communities in Miami Dade County and do a lot of good. So I just want to thank her again for that. All right, so let's move on with the next item is the open forum. And I want to just mention, before we do the open forum, the open forum is designed for residents to be able to address all of the council and residents, obviously, that attend the meeting or they're watching, with their concerns. However, it's a one-way forum. You can address us, but we won't respond to you because we have an agenda that we need to follow. So if you make comments or you ask questions, and we just look at you, you know, we're not dazed, you know, it's just that that's how the open forum is designed to be. After the meeting, if you want to contact our city manager, assistant city manager, or our city clerk, they can assist you with the next process if you want to follow through with whatever you've brought up or find out more information about it, okay? And I'd like to ask everyone that speaks at open forum to keep your, your message to three minutes or less, so that we can move on with the, the rest of the meeting and have time to hear everyone. So the first person that is up to speak is Francisco Fernandez.
Good evening. It's a privilege to be here, especially the night that the mayor happened to visit us. It's great. I've reached out to each and every one of you, a concern that I found out about reading in the New Times and the Herald. I wasn't even aware of the fact that the city is proposing a pedestrian, elevated pedestrian.
It's not elevated.
It's not elevated? Okay.
Ground level, grade level.
Excuse me, but that's what I thought. It doesn't really matter whether it's elevated or not. It's still a pedestrian bridge coming across the canal. I've been fortunate, I've been a member of the county family like Maria has for a number of years, and many of those years were spent in the Department of Transportation. So the Metro Rail station at Okeechobee has been there for thirty-five years. And during that period of time, I'm not aware of any drastic demand for the citizens of Miami Springs to access that bridge. And to spend $2 million on a bridge, even though it's not city money, it's all our money because it comes from the state, doesn't matter, without proper studies to see what number of citizens are going to access that area. Across the Okeechobee Station, there's a couple of motels that, there's really no logical reason because it's not a commercial area that this bridge is going to be connecting. So I really don't see how the city benefits from this, especially when ridership is down thirty-five to forty percent. I think that money could be used more wisely. And other aspects, build up the downtown area, if Maria's been absolutely phenomenal in getting grant money. If that money could be maybe spent more wisely, but there's no benefit for the community. No traffic studies, no pedestrian studies, other than the fact that we're going to build it there. We've had one by the high school for many, many years. There's no demand. The citizens of Miami Springs don't use that. They cross the railroad track on occasion, but it's not something that needs to be there. You've got the Twelfth Avenue Bridge, which is only two blocks away from the railroad tracks. It's not a long trek if it needs to be, if you need to go to the Hialeah site or folks from Hialeah into the Springs. I spoke briefly with my neighbors, and they're all against it. In the short period of time, I gathered more than thirty signatures one afternoon in two and a half hours. So I ask you to please look further into it, communicate with the community. Nobody was aware of it. I sent them the articles. So if you would, please, please make a point of getting the community behind it and find out what they really want, and they don't want it. That's all I have to say. You know, there's no benefit for anybody in the city of Miami Springs. It's not the commercial center. And like, once again, thank you, and congratulations to the new members. You're doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Francisco, sorry, there's a Fernando also, Fernandez, right, in Miami Springs? Let's get the two of you mixed up. Francisco, thank you. Okay, the next speaker, let me put on my glasses, is Arthur Karlick.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi.
Interestingly enough, he, he's echoing, I'm going to echo a lot of his, the same sentiments. I've been, I've been a resident here for over thirty-five years. I live, I don't live in the Bird section, but I also read on the, recently in the Herald about this proposed footbridge. I haven't seen any drawings of it. I'm not familiar as to whether it's going over Okeechobee, but I just want to voice my opposition to it. I just, you know, like was mentioned previously, we already have two bridges that connect to Hialeah. I don't see the need to have a third one, particularly in a location that, but say, resident, you know, the Bird section or a bunch of residents, residences. I don't live in the Bird section. I live on Cherokee. But nonetheless, as it was written in what I read, and as it was proposed, I agree. I think this is just something that, there is no demand. I, I, you know, I'll probably be reaching out to some of you just to see where we stand on that or what the status is. I haven't done that previously, but I, I feel that this is just something that's a boondoggle because I don't see, I've never used it, and I've gone on Metro Rail when I was younger, and I never crossed the, you know, the train tracks. I never, I see a lot of people fishing there, and I see a lot of homeless people living under the bridge, I mean, pardon me, under the train tracks. But I don't see necessarily residents clamoring or, or, you know, in single file line up on down north the river, I mean, North Royal, looking to cross over the train tracks to get to the Metro Rail. I, I don't see it. And perhaps, once I find some more information on it. But as it stands now, I sincerely oppose it. And, you know, like I said, I'd like to follow up on that later on at some other time. Appreciate the time.
You so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and the next speaker, please, is Annie Casab. Okay, and the next speaker, please, is Annie Casab.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Annie Casab. I am a resident at the 600th block of Minola Drive. And I am just going to echo when Mr. Councilwoman Vasquez said about the hotels. It is affecting our quality of life. I have, I'm representing my neighbors. Some of them couldn't be here because they're working. But our little block has become drug-infected prostitution. My children had to see things that they shouldn't have seen. And so, it's a, it's not decent, it's not clean, it's not safe for our children. My neighbors have little children, so they cannot be playing outside. It happens during the day, it happens during the night, it happens at two or three in the morning, and it's just becoming chaos for us. We don't want to move. We love our city. We want to stay. We've lived there for 25 years. And I'm proud of being a resident of Miami Springs. But this is just affecting our quality of life. It has to stop, at least for us. And in echoing what the mister was saying about all this money that we're going to spend on bridges, some for us, please, for our walls to separate our private residents from these hotels. I encourage you to go and visit that area. I constantly have to clean it because there's garbage on my lawn. And it's just not nice. It's just dirty. It wasn't like that 10 years ago. It's a dirty place. It doesn't feel like, it feels like almost over town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next agenda item, consent agenda, and we have nothing there. Old business. We have an update on the Fourth of July. Omar?
Mayor, if I might, to the chair, six A and B.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. Excuse me, Omar. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
For keeping tabs on me.
No.
Correcting, keeping me in line.
Trying to help you.
I'm sorry, we have a public hearing. Let's see, I need to open it. I am so sorry. Okay, approval of council minutes.
Through the chair, motion to move six A and six B.
Okay, the workshop and the regular meeting.
Yes, Mayor.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Six B, at the last regular meeting, as I read through the minutes, the, when we took the vote on the July the Fourth events, particularly the issue of the parade, right? The minutes indicate that we all voted in favor of it. I just wanted to clarify that I did vote against it, and I wanted to add, because it was in the Miami Springs news today, and I sent the note to Nestor, clarifying why I had voted against that. Unfortunately, everything was wrapped into the one vote. And my concern, and I just say it for the record, my concern about a parade, I love parades. I especially love Fourth of July parades as a veteran. But I just felt that the, it seemed to me that the staff was going to be overwhelmed with the amount of things that were happening. That's, at least that's the reading that I got from it. And so, that's just a clarification, but it was a four to one vote.
Okay.
On that particular item.
Yeah.
So, can we approve the minutes with that correction, Erica? And you can elaborate on that when Omar talks about the plans.
Yeah, retraction and readmission to pass six A and six B with the councilman's concern.
One second then.
All right. Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Through the chair.
The change was for the regular meeting.
Regular.
Regular, yeah, I said six B on the item.
Yeah. The four, the four one. Through the chair, if I might, just so we're aware here, that parade was, it went four to one. I knew that. I read it, but I just, because I was here, I knew it, I knew that you voted that way on that. But.
I just want to clear the record.
I think, and I, as I stated at the time, that I think this thing is going forward is going to be to our advantage. And I felt, I even mentioned, I believe, if you guys remember, that I asked for, let's wait till June 1. Further, I don't see it as being an overdraft on staff, because they are eliminating the, in Luda Parade, they're eliminating the other thing that they're going to do.
Vice Mayor, we can discuss that when, because it's on the agenda. So, when Omar's here, we'll discuss. This is just the change approving of the minutes. Okay.
Changing that, that's it.
Okay, so, the next agenda item, seven reports from boards and commissions, and we don't have any. And then we go to agenda item number eight, public hearings. So, I know Heidi's virtual. Do I open it up for the public hearing before you talk about the case?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Technology does work. I would recommend that we read the case number and applicant information that's under your agenda item for each of the public hearing items. And then, we can open the public hearing. Professional staff, through Chris Hyde, your city planner, will present each application. We can hear from the applicants if they wish to speak, followed by anyone who wishes to speak on the item. And then, we can close the public hearing, and you can deliberate. As a reminder, these three applications already went to the respective boards, which are the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the Board of Adjustment. So, those two boards have made their recommendations on each application. Just to quickly summarize, item eight A, the board recommended denial of this variance on eight B as in boy, as well as eight C, the board recommended approval. So, with that, since I'm on the mic, I'll go ahead and read the case numbers and all of that information, so that we can get right into it. So, item eight A, as in apple, is case number zero one, B as in Victor, 21. The applicant is Julio Somariva Jr. The address of the subject application is 661 Falcon Avenue. And the applicant is seeking approval to retain a pergola and a storage shed built without a permit. The storage shed is of typical metal storage measuring eight by 12, but with a two and a half foot setback quite close to the neighboring property. There is additional information when you look in your, the backup material. And you can see staff's report on that, which has already been presented to the board. And once again, the board's recommendation on this application was denied. And with that, I'll let Chris add anything that he wishes to add. And Mayor and Council, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask Mr. Hyde, myself, on any other technical legal issues. But again, I know we have several new members on the council this evening, and this is the first time that you may be going through this process of receiving a recommendation from these boards to you. So, once again, that is the process, the city's processes. These applications are heard by these boards. They make a recommendation of approval or denial. That recommendation comes to you to either affirm their recommendation or not. So, with that, I'll leave it to Mr. Hyde.
Okay, is Chris virtual? I don't see him. Virtual, okay.
Chris, Chris is virtual.
Mary?
Yes. Hi, Chris.
Hi. Okay, so, there is, there is very little that a building department or a zoning department finds more disturbing than after-the-fact variances, because our great fear is that people typically are well-aware that these structures need a permit, and they don't get them because they don't want to go through the process, they don't want to go through the time, or they know where they want to put it, will not be allowed, so they go ahead and build it anyway. Our concern is a grave one, that these kind of structures after-the-fact, particularly if they were to be approved, the word on the street becomes, oh, I did it, just do it. And then the worst that can happen, they may never notice it in your backyard, and you'll get away with it forever until you sell your house, and you need not worry about it. Or the, the next scenario would be that they would apply for an after-the-fact variance through our staff, through Planning and Zoning, and through City Council, and that the council would be very sympathetic to requiring a resident to tear down an after-the-fact structure. So, our concern is the precedent that it sets, that it sort of leads us down the path of permitting after-the-fact variances by simply going through the process, and then all is good. The second thing is, we typically look at the severity of the variances. The shed's quite close to the property line, but it's the pergola itself that's really quite disturbing. It fills the entire side yard, and you will notice in the variance, we talk about it being three and a half foot from the side property line. Accessory structures are measured from the vertical element. So, if you have a shed, it would be from the shed wall and not the shed roof. If you're measuring it from a pergola, it would be the uprights holding the pergola, and not the crossbeams that form a true pergola. When you take into consideration the crossbeams of the pergola, this property is virtually at zero to the neighboring property. So, it's quite disturbing. And then, we would also look at the enhancements of the property. Is there something that's so enhancing to the property that even though it doesn't have a variance, it's, it's a good thing, it looks good, it functions nicely, no one would be concerned with it. And I think if you look at the pictures, they speak for themselves. Th- this is not an item that was done with ecstatic consideration, or appearance of the yard, or appearance from the neighbors, but just simply something that the property owner desired. So, it failed each step of the way, and seemed to get worse the more we looked into it. So, and I spoke with the property owner about this very early on, and made it quite clear that I would not be recommending favorably on it. There were just too many things against it. Although, on the other hand, I advised him, hey, if it's already built and you've got X dollars into it, you know, a few hundred, eight, $900 more, I'm not sure the amount, in order to keep it, it may be worth it. That's going to be up to you. But we did recommend for denial. The board recommended for denial by a vote of five to zero, and now it is before your body for an actual decision.
Thank you, Chris. Does anybody have any questions? For our city planner? Okay, then I'll open it up for a public hearing. Heidi, is that, we're going to do each public hearing separately, right?
Correct.
Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item?
That's correct, Mayor. You can do each public hearing separately. I don't know if the applicant is there with you in person. I don't see them.
The applicant is here.
Okay.
Okay, by the way, good evening.
Hello.
A pleasure meeting you guys. And, yes, number one, when I bought the house back in 2009, I applied for a variance to park my boat on the side. Mr. Fahada was here at that time, and Mr. Aventuras, at that time, was an inspector. One of the things that I sit down with them is especially what I wanted to do in a house. Yeah, number one, was the variance for the boat, that it was approved in 2012, in 2012. And I specifically told him that I wanted to build a barbecue right behind where I parked the boat, which he told me specifically, yes, do whatever you wanted to do, and then apply for the variance. And that's exactly what I did, you know? Back in 2014, I ended up building the pergola and set up the barbecue. Of course, you know, everything, it was covered because I have a big avocado tree in the center of the, on the center of the patio, the backyard. So, I didn't want to destroy the avocado tree. So, what I did, I contracted pergola on the side of the house, even though it was close to the fence, because I was advised to get a variance, okay? And that's what the decision that I ended up taking. When I, when the hurricane strikes last time, they damaged completely half of the avocado tree. So, the pergola became exposed. And of course, you know, at that time, you know, somebody called the city and complained that I had a pergola in the backyard. So, I did, I went and applied for that, and Mr. Hyde said, listen, exactly what he said, he will not recommend it, but he looked at the pictures, he looked everything, and he said, listen, this looked good. If you can prove it, that it's his wood contractor, you know, it might be for approval. And what I did, yes, he told me, if you had the money to spend, yes. And I said, yes, I already spent too much money on this. I'm not going to throw it away. So, I went and spent almost $3,000 on engineering to prove them, which I have all the plans, and all the drawings, and all the schematics for that pergola, on drawing, which the, you guys have it. I mean, they asked me to make 10 copies, you guys 10 copies of that particular survey and that particular drawings. Now, when it comes to the shed, the shed was already there since I bought the house. The owner, previous owner had it. And of course, if you look at my fence, my fence is one feet away from the original fence that is chain lead fence that is on the other side of my wood fence. So practically, if they measuring three and a half feet, I'm almost, almost four and a half feet practically from that, because it's a feed that they don't see that is away from my, the wood fence that I set up through the chain lead fence that still has the neighbor in. Okay, so, but it's something that it was already previously done. When I did my roof, the inspector came over, everything was fine, nobody complained. When I did my window shade, nobody complained. When I did my accordion shadow, nobody complained. Until now, somebody complained that my, my shed, it was there. Obviously, yes, it's my mistake. I can understand. It was, I bought the house, and it was there. I never touched it, and I haven't touched it, you know? And one of the advice that I got is that they told me to add it to the variance, and that's what I had done. So, everything that I done here, I was advised, and I was, and I consulted with the previous inspector before I did what I had done.
If I may, if I may step in there before.
Have spent a lot of money, I have presented myself with a lot of patients, and I have presented myself with all the documents that you guys has requested. So, it's your decision whether you want to approve it or not, but I had done it the way you guys told me, and I consulted before I moved, and I take that step, because I consulted, and I specifically told him, the inspector, that it was there before, when I got my first variance to park my boat. Otherwise, I will not build it. Because if somebody tells me, look, you know, they're going to throw it away, there's no reason for me to spend that kind of money. But if it's somebody already approving me my variance to park my boat, because I'm telling Luke that I want to put a barbecue on the background with, with something else, and I have the money to spend it, because that's what I wanted, I guess it's fine. So, and now, you know, what is upsetting is, is, you know, if I, I came and I consult, and then I got denied, you know, it's upsetting, after having to spend too much. Because it's not the $900 that I spent supporting those, those wood poles, it's about all the time spending and arguing, and all the time they're spending with the engineering, trying to get things done correctly, which everything was done correctly. Thank you.
If you want to stay one second, sir? You want to stay one second? You want to stay one second?
Mr. Redd. Summer Brea, I thank you for being here tonight and for bringing your case to us. You know, I've always been kind of sympathetic to folks that come in front of us with stuff like that, through the years I've been up here. But in this particular, I've never been sympathetic, however, when the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning goes 4-1 or 5-0. I think right here, you're fighting a losing battle, and I'll tell you why. Because you are going on something that was already there. And secondly, do you have in writing anybody from the city, a city official that told you that that was okay?
No, that's my mistake, because I shouldn't have impacted.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sir, one second, just in case anyone else has any questions, if you don't mind? Anyone else?
I don't know.
Okay, if I understand it correctly, you're saying that you, you were told to do it and then apply for a variance?
Yes, that's what I was...
I think that that might have been a misunderstanding, because my question would be, like, you've got the variance for the boat, and variances are there, the ability to request a variance, we have codes, we have ordinances and codes, but obviously, the lots in Miami Springs vary, you know, and so it doesn't fit everything. So the ability to request a variance is there so that when something doesn't quite fit where, you know, we say things need to be for our residential community, that an owner can request a variance and ask what they would like to do, and then it'll be approved and denied, and obviously, yours was approved for the boat, from what you've told me, you got a variance to allow to put your boat in an area where normally you cannot have your boat. So you know that a variance is required in order to do something. And if you had asked for a variance for this, it may be, have been denied, but it may have been approved, or it may, the city probably would have worked with you to say, look, not like this, but if you do this, which I know is something that Chris works very much with the residents.
I totally understand.
And I think the issue with us approving something, well, again, like the Vice Mayor said, we have two advisory boards that review this, that, you know, do their due diligence in reviewing this and trying to grant variances when they're reasonable, and also make sure that, you know, that our community meets a certain standard, and is a consistent standard for the most part. The issue with this of granting something after the fact is that the precedent then is, I'd rather ask for forgiveness than for permission. And, you know, and, you know, residents will do, build something and say, but it's really nice, I spent all this money, I'm so sorry, and, you know, we'll just go ahead and say, oh, okay, then go ahead and keep it. So it's important that, and, and I'm sorry, you've been through so many hoops through this, and I can imagine how frustrating this is.
I totally agree with what you do for, and I totally agree with whatever the job is, but with somebody, when you come to the city, and you're being advised to do certain way, and you follow that, and then somebody else step in and change the rule.
Okay, I think, I think...
I'm sorry to say...
There must have been a misunderstanding there, because anyone in the city would say, apply for a variance, and then they wouldn't say...
It wasn't, because I specifically applied for the variance on the boat, and I specifically told at that time to Inspector what I wanted to do. And I was told to...
And I'm sorry about that.
Through the chair?
Yes, yes.
Hi, Mr. Somariva. Nice to meet you, and thank you for coming. As for the pergola, you want to go get a variance for the boat, correct? For to put the boat?
Yes.
But the boat and the pergola, they're two different things.
Correct.
Should you have done the pergola within the ordinance guidelines, perhaps you would have gotten a variance that would have been approved?
Well, maybe I will say, if you had done it at the same time, maybe I shouldn't be here. Because maybe that person that approved the boat variance would approve, because that's what the person that I sit down is explaining how I wanted to do things.
But it's a boat variance, not the pergola?
No. What I'm saying is, when I spoke to this person...
I understand, but you went for...
I talked about doing the variance for the boat, and to follow to building the pergola with the barbecue every...
But they're two different...
And I did exactly two different things at two different times. I should have done everything at once.
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this item at the public hearing? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing for this item, and we'll move on to, oh, I'm sorry, we need to take a vote. Let's see, Heidi, I need a motion to, to...
Approve or deny.
Approve or deny the request, right? Okay.
Through the chair, a motion to deny.
All right, a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Best?
Nay. Aye, actually.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
To deny, yes, to deny. All right, motion carries.
The next item is 8, B as in Boyd, it's case number 02, B as in Victor, 21. The applicant is Ina Mantel-Vanelli. The property address, it's the subject of the application, is 141 Glendale Drive, and the applicant is requesting to split the existing lot into two lots of identical size, each measuring 55 feet in width and 127 feet in depth for a lot size of 6,985 square feet for each lot. I'll let Chris, Mr. Hyde, explain the application, but I do want you to understand that on this one, the Board of Adjustments recommendation is approval, and it's two requests. So the one request is to split the lot, the existing lot, in two. And then the second part, where, so on that first request, split the lot in two, it would be to leave the resulting lots as lots of 6,985 square feet, where the code requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. And the second part of the request is to allow the lot width to be 55 feet in width, where the code requires a 75-foot width for the lot size. So with that, again, I'll let Chris provide his staff recommendation and report, which is already in your backup, it's already been presented to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustments recommendation on this application is approval.
So you are essentially looking at two variances, one for each lot. The 110-foot lot would be split, as our council mentioned, down the middle to create two 55-foot lots. Both lots would be well in excess of the 6,000-square minimum for that zoning district, coming in at 6985. So the lots are well within the reasonable lot size. We would be fairly reluctant to grant a variance for an undersized lot, but not for a lot that meets minimum lot size, but just happens to be short on lot width. We did, and just an analysis, this is certainly not citywide, it's certainly not scientific, but we went, this is mid-block, we went from one street end to the other, and then we went to the south side of Glendale, the subject street, from one end of the block to the other, and then we went forward behind the subject property, trucks and drive from one, from one street to the other. The great majority of properties in this district, and I will dare say, the great majority of properties in our city do not meet 75-foot width. That's a very big, very generous lot. We certainly have some, we have some even much larger, especially around the golf course, but the norm for our city is 50, 55, 60, 65, 75 is quite unusual. So when we started to take a look at that, two 55-foot lots on a block that has, next door going west is a 60-foot lot, 60-foot lot, 60-foot lot, the next one irregular, I don't know. Here's another 60, a 50, a 50, a 50, a 50, a 50, and so on. Here's a big one at 110, so I'm not, I'm not trying to mislead you, that there certainly are no 75-foot lots. There are, and there are some quite larger, but the great majority of lots in this neighborhood, and by extension, in our city, do not meet the 75-foot width. It's quite onerous. If you had a 6,000-square-foot lot with a 60-foot, 75-foot width, your lot would be extremely shallow as to not make a lot of sense, and certainly not fit in with the original planning grid pattern from Glenn Curtis and all successors there, too. So we're quite comfortable, this leaves a reasonably-sized lot with a house on it, and creates a reasonably-sized lot, vacant lot, to be demolished. Now, if you look at the survey, and you draw that 55-foot lot line down the center, and you have three surveys in your proper, in your, in your package, one is the entire property at 110, one is the 55-foot wide lot on the west, the other is the 55-foot lot on the east. When you do that, you will see that there is a flat-roofed structure on the south side of the existing house that would actually encroach over into the newly-created lot. So our agreement with the property owner through our negotiations was that that flat-roofed structure would be removed. So the proper setback is nearly provided for at the front. The house actually skews from the property line, so although it's about only four feet at the corner of the house, it's a good five feet, five and a half feet in the middle of the house, and by the time you get to the back of the house, it's six feet, and then if you extended that lot even further, you would probably come up with a 65, even 70-foot, excuse me, 6.5 or 7-foot setback. We think that's adequate, it meets the norm of this neighborhood and of the city. So we have required, they've agreed to remove that flat-roofed laundry room structure, and the photos are in your package, to provide a proper setback. The north, excuse me, the west side of the west lot, of the existing lot with the house, would absolutely meet that 5.5. And then the newly-created vacant lot would be required to meet that five and a half foot side yard setback, if for whatever reason they did not want to do that. That could only be done through a variance of this board, and I've made it quite clear that our recommendation to give a side yard setback variance on the newly-created lot was negligible, it just, it wouldn't happen. If you want to create this lot, it's undersized, setbacks must be proper. And I think that's the only thing I have to say.
Open, before we have discussion, let me open it up for a public hearing, Vice Mayor, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay, this is a public hearing on this item, does anyone wish to speak? The owner of the property here? Are you here? Would you like to speak? Is there anything? Okay. You don't have to, it's up to you. All right, thank you. All right, let's open it up for a discussion.
Through the chair, Mayor, yeah, my question is to Chris, is Chris still with us?
Yes, I am.
Chris, Vice Mayor Best here, listen, is it the intention of the owner, I suppose I could ask them that, but it strikes me, it might be the intention of the owner to, since they're shaving away at both sides to make this thing work, and then make this variance fly, is it their intention, I wonder, to build two different edifices, one on each lot, if it's granted?
My understanding, and since they are in the audience, you may want to ask them about this directly, my understanding is that the existing house on the western lot will remain, which will create a development site on the west, which will then be a saleable lot. Honestly, you just never know, they could tell you that they're cutting off that lot so Grandma and Grandpa can live next door, or all kinds of flowery reasons. The bottom line is, not necessarily what are they going to do with it if you allow the lot, but does the lot split make sense regardless of what they do with it, and who lives there, and for how long? And for me, it certainly meets that test.
And I think certainly, in that part of town, it meets the criteria, as just pointed out by the planner, so...
Yeah, it's right in the middle, it's bigger than quite a few, a little smaller than some, and certainly smaller than some of the anomalies, the big lots like this one, there's another 90-foot lot nearby. So I'm not suggesting to you there simply are none, just that the clear majority of houses in this neighborhood, and again, citywide, do not and could not meet that 75-foot width. For a 6,000-square-foot lot, it's quite onerous, and frankly, quite unusual.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. I don't know if you need to answer that question that I asked, Chris, I think I got what he said on it.
We want to sell the lot, not for Grandma, unfortunately, but, but yes, we want to sell, we want to put stipulations that they can't build this monstrous house in there, and no square boxes or anything, because we don't want to move out of that house, we want to stay in that house.
So you're, so it's your intention to apply with the five bullet points that's been recommended, and get the variance, and split the lots, and go from there? Thank you, sir, thanks very much.
Mayor?
Other questions? Yes, Heidi?
This is Heidi. I just want to add, for all three of these applications, and my apologies that you don't have it before you this evening, but we will be adopting resolutions that are consistent with the staff report and the decisions made by council this evening. So I just wanted to let you know that you will have resolutions in the record, which will be provided to the applicants on each application.
And Councilor is correct, well, among the conditions of that resolution will be to list part and parcel the conditions under which we are recommending you approve that variance, they will go into the final resolution, and they will assure us that the conditions that we're talking about are in fact, and must in fact, be complied with.
That's absolutely correct. So in your backup, in the staff report, there is a recommendation of approval, and there's a list of conditions, A through E, on this application in particular, to split the property. So all of those will be part of the order, resolution, development approval, however you want to refer to it, and that does include the demolition that will need to be performed, as well as a driveway that will need to be constructed on the parcel of the existing house. All of those conditions that you see in your, in the staff report, those will all be incorporated.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other comments?
Through the chair, yes.
I spoke to Chris earlier, but Chris, I wanted to elaborate more on the interior, the interior lot line. I wanted to see if on the survey, we can get a definitive number, because I know the minimum is five, and I think, based on what I'm seeing here, it's about 3.95, maybe four.
Right. All four interior lot lines, including those of the western lot, the house, the lot with the house, and what will be the vacant lot, require five and a half foot side yard setback. In the case of the existing house, because the house does not run parallel to the property line, it's a bit skewed, so at the very corner of that lot, of the house, very south corner, southwest corner of that lot, the setback is approximately four feet, not five and a half. As you go further in, the setback continues to increase, because the, again, because the house line and the lot line are not parallel, I think you're going to be in the four and a half, five range towards the middle of the house, at or near five and a half, at the rear corner of the lot, at the northwest corner of the house, should be 55 by that point. And then again, if they extend that, if they want to do an addition, they continue that lot line, but the required setback will actually grow then from six and a half to seven, seven and a half, perhaps even eight feet. And that's something that you may recall, at least some of the returning councilmen, that we put in there because we're having a problem with... that we put in there because we're having a problem with construction errors in which the house did not meet, excuse me, was, did not run parallel to the lot line. So perhaps as you, usually it's the opposite, and it's a little too, it meets it in the front, but as you get towards the back, it starts to get a little closer to the property line. But you, we made a, we had a resolution that addressed that by saying, you can continue a legal, non-conforming setback. The setback is fully legal, the house was built that way, the house was approved that way. It is just non-conforming. It doesn't conform with current code. Or frankly, in this case, it probably does not conform with the code even in place at the time. It's just a construction error. So we tried to make that easier on people, that they didn't somehow then have to go at the back corner of their house, and the addition had to be set in two feet. It just was so frankly unattractive, unreasonable, unfair. And it's just something that we felt that we could address on the front end, rather than bringing anybody with a skewed house versus lot to grant them relief without going through this public hearing process. And that would be the case here. The legal non-conforming setback would be allowed to remain, but as the house goes back, it will grow and grow and grow. And if there had been an adjacent house on the western lot, we'd probably be a little more concerned. But because it's a vacant lot, there's just a small portion of the house that's a small distance closer to the property line. People who buy and examine and build on that house are buying that with that understanding and going in with their eyes fully open. So we were quite comfortable, this was, this was fair for everyone involved. And we have a young couple that has just too big of a house, too big of a yard, but that wants to stay and saw an opportunity to split that, to bring a new family into the neighborhood and allow them to stay as well. Attracting new residents is certainly a goal of ours. But in my mind, keeping existing residents is paramount.
Anything else?
I just had one last question. So I just, the first, a future buyer that buys this lot, and they want to make, we already talked about this a little bit earlier, but I just want to confirm, if they come to buy this lot and build a home, will they be honored the same variance to be just as close?
No, absolutely not. It's a vacant lot, and it's not really a variance. It's just, it's just confirming the legal non-conforming setback of that house. There is no variance involved in leaving the wall of the existing hip-roofed house in place. No variance whatsoever. The only variance is in creating the lot width of 55 feet with 65 required. And yet, again, with 6,000-square-foot lot minimum and almost 7,000-square foot provided. This is a new lot and no exceptions, no variance, no nothing applied to it. It's just a vacant lot that then people can come forward and meet the code. And there's, we met that very clear.
I think just could further expand on that. On the vacant lot, we're not, there's no variance on that right now because we don't have an application pending to build that. So when, if that parcel is sold and a new owner wants to come in and build a house, so long as they meet the code requirements, they won't need a variance. If they can build within the required setbacks to the right height, meeting the correct lot coverage, et cetera, they won't need to ask for a variance. They may ask for a variance if they want one, but that's not, that is not what is before you this evening.
Yeah, Heidi is absolutely correct. They may need to meet all of the development standards in place at that time. And although they could ask for a variance, I've already made it clear from the get-go, it is not something that I would recommend favorably on. And given the circumstances of this situation, it's not, and I can't speak for you, Mayor and Council, but it is not something that I see that we would do after granting the variance on the lot width, is actually grant any kind of sideyard variances or other relief. It's a fully buildable lot.
Chris, I seem to remember a few years back, we had a similar request for splitting a lot on Westward. It was two smaller lots, I mean, it was a large lot, and it was going to be a little bit smaller. We went ahead with the staff recommendation to allow it. And the owners of the smaller property were able to invest in that property and make it much nicer. And the new house that was built next to it is a very nice house. So it took a property that, you know, that needed some TLC, and we got two nice houses in the community.
Yeah, it's just a couple blocks of west of City Hall, on the north side of City Hall, sort of a Miami modern house, came out very lovely. And the situation is uncannily similar, because when they drew the lot line down the middle of the parcel to create two lots, they met the lot minimum size, as do these houses, as do these lots on Glendale. And they also had a flat-roofed carport addition, which was easily removed without getting into the actual roof structure of the main house. So they demolished the carport, which was on the west side of the east lot, therefore providing themselves with proper sideyard setbacks and leaving a lot still vacant, but available that would have to meet the minimum lot width. Excuse me, would have to meet the sideyard setbacks, excuse me. Very similar, two lots, both oversized, both under width. Flat roof was in the way, flat roof was demolished, created proper setbacks on the house lot, and then created a very nice buildable lot on the west. And there's an example where we got a young resident, it's a guy in his twenties building his first house, and then looking to sell that and help with the construction of his house. Very, very similar.
And the other alternative too with these, and you know, there's a lot of ways to look at this, is when these lots are oversized like this, somebody can buy the lot and build a really, really huge house on the lot, too.
Which frankly, comes into our consideration also. Does somebody really want a house that is, let's see, 110, 22, 98-foot long, sitting on Westward? Fully approvable? 11-foot setback on each side on the Glendale lot, 110? 11-foot setback each side? Let me get my math, 22? Yeah, wow. Big house.
Well, does anyone have any other questions? Or anything else, a discussion for this? All right, so I'll accept a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Mayor?
Motion through the-
Okay. Sorry, you can, you're gonna-
Motion through the chair. Item 8B, case number 02 Victor 21, motion for approval.
To approve staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Really?
Also, in accordance with, in accordance with the Board of Adjustment, too, as well.
Okay, and the Board of Adjustment recommendation, so, all right, second? All right. Take the vote, please, Erica.
Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion, please, okay.
By the way, I should have mentioned, this was also a 5-0 vote in support of the lot split from the Board of Adjustment.
Mayor and Council, the next item is, oh, Heidi, I'm sorry, you're going to read that. No problem, Mayor. It's item 8, C as in cat. Case number 01, Z as in zebra, P as in Paul, 21. The applicant is Juan Carlos Oliva, and the address is 4601 through 4649 Northwest 36th Street. The applicant is seeking to replat the property, which consists of two separate parcels at 4601 and 4649 Northwest 36th Street, as well as the alley, a city right-of-way running between the two parcels. Unlike the applications that you just had before you, which are, in essence, variance applications, they're asking you to, on the prior two applications that you just heard, you're asking for an adjustment of the code requirements of variance. This application is for a tentative plat, and this only requires that the tentative plat meet the requirements of the city code. So it's different, it's not a, it's not an adjustment, it's not a variance. It's just simply confirming that the tentative plat meets the requirements of the code. Your professional staff has reviewed it, finds that it does meet the requirements. And so the next step will be for this, once it, assuming it is approved this evening, this application will be sent to the county. The county will review it. If there's anything that needs to be adjusted, it will get done. And then it will come back to you for a final plat approval. And I'll let Chris provide you the history on this. And once again, the zoning board's recommendation on this application was approval.
Thank you. So, yes, this is, this was originally three separate parcels. The parcel at, sorry. The 4601 parcel measures 17,319 square feet. The 4649 property, another office building, and both office buildings would be demolished in order to accommodate this new building. That's a 17,346. We, years ago, approved a project on just the western portion, 4649. The applicant later became aware of the availability of the corner office building lot on the west side of the alley, started to get into discussions with us about really doing something big and impactful. And what we determined is, we could abandon the alley, and in exchange for abandoning the alley, we got an easement back. It creates one parcel of land. However, if, some of you know of this and some of you don't, if you can visualize the front elevation, it's essentially, comes off of both the east and the west. And when we get to a certain point that we felt comfortable was the height that needed to be necessary to get trucks through the alley, fire trucks, garbage trucks lifting the big dumpster over, overhead and dumping in, utilities, any number of issues. Once we felt that we got to that point, the building will then cross the alley, which is now private property. And then the upper floors will be full floor plates running block through to create real synergy. One of the problems that we have is the lack of width and the lack of depth. And this was a great solution to tie together two relatively small buildings into what is really quite a larger building. And then again, keep in mind, we abandoned the alley, but we have an easement back. It's fully functional. City residents can continue to drive in and out of the alley. Garbage pickup can continue up and down the alley. Delivery trucks, you name it. Anything that runs there now will be able to continue to operate. It will not be encumbered in any way. It simply will be private property that the city has an easement on. And that, that means utilities and so forth. It's also going to be done in brick pavers to match the brick paver sidewalk that's going to run all along 36th Street and wrap the corners to the extent of the northern portion of the development. One of the conditions, and one of the primary conditions of the approval of that project, was that they do a replat. And the replat just simply takes what are two cumbersome meets and bounds descriptions of the east office parcel, the west office parcel, and the alley. And instead of having a three-page meets and bounds, 16 minutes, 8 degrees, 4 seconds west turn, it's just going to simply be the Oliva tract. So it's good for housekeeping, it's good for business, it's good for us to keep track and everyone knows exactly what we're talking about. Because quite frankly, in the future, if someone were to leave that legal description the way it is, to really understand it, we'd have to turn to a survey to describe it to us, where this takes that all the way. Heidi is correct that this is a tentative plat. The tentative plat was recommended favorably by a vote of 4 to 1 at the zoning and planning board, and will then come to you, which it is now, for tentative plat approval. It is then transmitted to Miami-Dade County Plat Division, and they'll make their changes and tweaks. And they will send it back then to the city council. It will not go to the planning board again. Just goes back to city council for approval of that final plat. And once the city approves the final plat, its final step is to go back and be approved by the county clerk of the courts, excuse me, by the county commission, and then recorded with the county clerk of the courts. Once our city clerk is in hand of the approved final plat, we'll give one to Ulysses to put in the building department, file, so that we know that this condition was approved. And then construction can follow. It's frankly, it's a request, but it's not a request. It's, we've told them, you need to do this to gain that approval. And here they are coming to do it to gain that approval. So to say no would just, it's not comprehensible, frankly.
What it is, is basically it's taking two plots and they're replating. This is kind of the opposite of the other one. And they're replating it as one property because the owner bought both properties and it's more workable as replatted.
Yeah, except, the only thing that I would say to quibble is it's three plots. It's the two office plots, one on the east, one on the west, and the city alley in between. Whether you can consider that a plat or not, I think is debatable. But it's all of those three pieces of land. And you're right, it's almost the polar opposite of a lot split, where you take a big lot and divide it into two. Here we're taking two smaller lots and a city right-of-way and combining it into one.
One commercial, and the alley that we're talking about is actually this alley between the two buildings, the commercial property.
That's correct. And like I said, if you can visualize it, there will be a tunnel in the middle where the alley is, so everything still functions the way it does. And just at some point, when we're comfortable that the height is achieved to cross over with building, so the upper four, I believe, floor plates become parking and offices and sort of a green rooftop that could be a very nice amenity. In my opinion, it will be the finest building we have in the city of Miami Springs, bar none.
All right, thank you, Chris. Let me open it for a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Is the owner here? Just to note, okay. The council for the owner, okay. And does anyone have any questions?
I do, Mayor, through the chair.
To the council or to Chris?
To Chris, if he's still there.
I am.
Hi, Chris. So basically, what we're saying here, what your recommendation is, is that the legal description and the sketch of survey and geometry needs to be replatted, right?
That's correct. Instead of-
Right, that is through the process you described. Now, I guess the real question is, how long of a process will this take?
It's a good question, and there's a few unknowns in there because of the Miami-Dade County Plat Review Committee. I don't know their schedule, particularly with COVID. I don't know if they're meeting. We've been trying to get through with them to figure out what we're looking at, and- what we're looking at. And even then, once plat committee is through with it, then it comes back to us, which is really pro forma. And then we send it back to the county commission. I have been counseling them that I think we are probably looking at the better part of the year. Applicants' counsel may have a better feel for that than I. But it's a lot of steps, a lot of processes, a lot of deadlines, a lot of meetings. A lot of addressing questions and concerns. It's, it's a difficult process.
So if we approve this here this evening, that'll at least get it going, right?
Yes, that's correct. Then, then it will be ready to be put into final plat and sent down to the Miami-Dade County Plat Approval Committee.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions?
Through the chair? Yes. I'm seeing here a little bit on the history. I just wanted to confirm a question that I have. It says that the applicant obtains a variance for the maximum building height in order to raise a rooftop architectural element. What is the maximum roof height for that, Chris?
One hundred and fifty feet. This was slightly above. It was a great debate for us. And if I recall correctly, they actually came through with an under, with a building that was under the maximum height. But we were all disappointed that they, that the square footage that they took out of there was on the ground floor. So instead of having these great high roofed spaces that really give you a sense of being, whether it's a restaurant or, you know, sort of a warehousey feel perhaps, that we shortened those floors. The office floors also came down to be relatively short. We honestly, I, if I'm correct, because this is my recollection on this, we're not normally in the position of requesting. People get variances. But when we found out their solution to not having the variance, took so much away from the quality of the building, the quality of the space, both on the ground floor for restaurants, cafes and so on. Gyms, for example, everyone wants a gym with a nice ice ceiling. You don't want eleven-foot ceilings in your gym, whatever, markets, supermarkets, could be anything. So we really encourage them to get that variance. And leave, and leave the floor plates as they are. Leave those nice tall ceilings on the first floor. Leave good quality of height on the office floors. And then do your architectural element. And again, you understand it's an architectural element, which many codes would not even count as height. We do. And the other solution would just to get rid of this swoopy, fairly dramatic rooftop structure. They could have just simply got rid of it. But our feeling was, to what gain? To what gain are we matching our code if the project's going to suffer from that?
Any other questions? Okay, and the council, you don't wish to make any comments, correct? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and accept the motion. Motion to approve the recommendations of staff.
Second here, sir.
All right, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Bahet.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the next item, consent agenda. We have none. Now we're at old business. Update on Fourth of July. Omar, that was quite a stretch.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Basically, for the Fourth of July, we're, we're still going to do, obviously, the fireworks. We already signed the contract. We will have the aquatics event at the Aquatic Center. And we're working on the actual parade every day. We've reached out to several people to see if anybody would be interested in participating. We have gotten some responses back. But we are waiting on some others to respond. We did get the waiver approved today, which is what people would sign for any liability issues, things like that. We have met with Public Works and the Police Department. We're going to extend the water zone just off Azure Way. But we're going to go about twenty feet from the corner of Azure and Grace Lutheran's allow, allow people who do not want to go through the water zone to turn off of there and then get out. We've discussed some ways to maybe curtail a little bit how we could keep some people from not getting so close to the street on Curtis Parkway for the water so no one runs in and out. We're still kind of debating that a little bit, but it doesn't seem that we'll be able to do much because if we put barricades or a snow fence or a yellow cord, they're either going to go over it, around it. So we're wondering if it matters whatever we do, if it's going to work or not, except if we put police, you know, there, lined up like right here, I guess. But I don't think there's anything we could do that's gonna, I mean, if I was a nine-year-old kid, you're not going to stop me with a barricade. Just being honest. So we're wondering if all that effort from Public Works and Parks and Recreation to just put something there is really going to work. We're looking into it, but right now, we're hoping that it'll just, everybody will follow the rules and the guidelines and we'll have a parade like we've had in the years past. We did try to reach out to see if there was any vehicles available. I said that I would reach out again and there's, there's nothing available. So we're asking everybody to decorate their vehicles. We're asking everybody to, whether it's a golf cart, golf cart has to be street legal. The person driving the golf cart has to have a driver's license. So I can't have my twelve-year-old niece drive my golf cart. That's not allowed. You have to have a driver's license and it has to be street legal. We're not allowing any motorbikes or four-wheelers or ATVs, anything like that. The vehicles have to be decorated for Fourth of July. You can have an American flag, United States flag. You can't have any other flag. That's it. That one right there. Everything else will not be allowed in the parade. So there's no anybody, whether it's a Biden flag or Trump flag or any other flag, none of that's allowed, just the United States American flag. So we're trying to keep it as simple as possible. The few people that have called us that are interested, we've given them the guidelines and they have not had a problem with it. So we're looking forward to a nice event. Miami-Dade County Fire, we did reach out to them. And they told us we're late on getting the fire truck that we used to get. So we're going to reach out to, to our station downstairs and see if they'll participate, which I'm sure they will. But obviously, if they get a call, then they gotta go. So our air patrol is probably going to be doing the Carter Guards. We're waiting for a response from them, see if they can get anybody to participate. But they kind of told us that they'll help us out as much as possible. We don't have a band. We tried contacting the high school. That's a no-no. So we're hoping that the community comes out, people participate and we'll, we'll use the community as, as members to, you know, to give us some, a decent crowd at that parade.
No, I, I just through the chair, just to say, thanks for your efforts, Omar.
Oh, well, we'll get it done.
You and staff, actually.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get it done. We're working hard on it. It's more coordination than anything. And it's almost like we're chasing people, but because we're, we're pressed for time. So we sent people an email. We called them and then two days later, like, hey, don't forget about us, you know, we're still, so we're trying to get people involved because the more people we have, the, the better the parade is. For us, logistically, the more we have, the harder it is to run it. But we want, if we're going to do it, we want it to be done as, you know, the best we can. So we're, we're chasing people down.
The car show this year will be Saturday night. Usually does it the day before the fourth anyway. We figured, we were looking at Friday or Saturday, but we talked to the police and they figured, they said by closing the circle and all that, it would be better to do it Saturday night.
I think, I think that makes, I think that makes perfect sense, William.
Sunday.
Sunday.
That's Sunday's Friday night, yeah.
So it works out great as the, the car show gives us a full weekend of activities, the parade in the morning on Saturday, the car show Saturday night. Obviously, the aquatics event on Sunday and then the fireworks at night. So we'll have a nice weekend going on, which will, which will be nice for the community.
Nice job, sir. Through the chair.
Almost back to normal.
Yes, Councilman.
I have no objections.
Okay, good. Okay, anyone else?
No, thank you, Omar.
I just want to say, Omar, thank you, you and your staff. I know we threw this on you. And I want to thank the vice mayor because I was for not having a parade. I think we had all agreed we weren't going to have a parade and the vice mayor just kind of persevered and said, you know, if we keep cutting out the parade, we're one of the few communities that have one and, you know, we'll just never have it again. And he said, you know, even if it's not up to par, as we've been able to do them in the past, that I know you felt, Vice Mayor, that it was really important to
Yeah, Mayor, I, I
keep the placeholder at least and
I, I appreciate all, all of you that indulged me in that. And, and I think we're doing the right thing.
I think so.
Even if it's cut down a smaller, if we're still having one.
And I don't think, I agree. I didn't want to spend the money of trying to get convertibles and all these things. It should be more of a homespun event of, what I did want to ask is, I, I appreciate the idea behind the flags, just the American flag and that's it. So that will not bring up some sort of, you know, unexpected controversy that might arise or misintentions or misunderstandings. You're going to have a place for pedestrians and for people who want to ride their bikes? Because a lot of people want to, you know, like to do that too. So
Yeah, which we'll set that up. Once we get a feel how many people we actually have.
Okay.
And what vehicles they're in. So we try to keep the golf carts at least, you know, if we have, let's say we, let's say we get twenty. Because there's a lot of people with golf carts in the city and we're expecting they'll come out. So we might put like, you know, like eight or nine in this little area and then we'll put some vehicles or people walking and then we'll, so we'll kind of set it up where it's spread out. But yes, we're going to have a section where people will be walking, the people riding bike. Obviously, for safety reasons, we'll do that in case someone happens to step on the gas and hope you don't have an accident or something like that.
Someone sign up for a bicycle.
Yes, well, he said that he didn't know if he was going to be on a bicycle or walking. So we're still waiting for his response. He's one of the people on my list.
I think you said he wanted to be on a unicycle, I think.
Oh, Mikey. I know our, our youngest daughter for years and she's grown and, and married and moved away, but you know, riding her bike in the Fourth of July parade and decorating it with her friends was like, it was such a big deal for her for so many years, you know, looking forward to that. And they would decorate their bikes and so
I just warn him when you go through the water zone on your bike.
Well, and that's what I wanted to ask you. As far as the, the water zone, I know that that's an issue. And I know you brought it up that it seems like when you get to the water zone is where everyone is condensed. Have you thought about having the water zone on Westward, I mean, the dry zone on Westward and all of Curtis Water Zone? And that way it's not confusing because I know in the past I've been where the water zone's supposed to end or start, you know, by Grace Lutheran and nobody remembers and is sure and, you know, is it, have you given some thought to that of just having this is dry, this is wet? And that, that way it's very clear and there isn't that.
Mayor, are you suggesting that all of Curtis be wet all the way to the end of the parade?
Didn't we say that because of Fair Havens and them bringing the folks out that there was a section?
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a section in Curtis Parkway that can't be part of the water.
I see, all right.
So to answer your question, Fair Havens does throw a curveball, plus the fact that the water zone.
The Fair Havens residence, you're right. That would not be, well.
And it's not Fair Havens anymore.
Yes. Miami Springs.
Through the chair.
Okay, well, anything else? Again.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious. It's just thank you, Omar and, and Bob and everyone. And I'm looking forward to you having to start next year in January, you know, getting your full time in. I'm just curious. I was thinking about this. I was thinking about the parades. And I've, I've been in the city now just over ten years. Has there ever been a parade with a reviewing stand? Just curious, I've been in
Not to my knowledge.
Many parades and there's something unique about having a reviewing stand. But anyway, that's just
Tom, you ever recall one?
Just my age. No, no. When I was in the Air Force, I was in a drill team. And we participated and there were lots of reviewing.
Right, and you walk by.
I was in California.
Yeah, you walk by, you walk by and you turn, when you go by the stand, you turn by.
I was just curious about that because I don't, I don't remember seeing it.
I don't think
I wanted to say that this, what Omar's and his staff is doing of, you know, last meeting two weeks ago, all of a sudden, we threw this on you of, okay, now let's go ahead and have the parade when we had told you no. And, and, and it's just such an example of, you know, our city staff, I'm constantly since I've been on the council, I am constantly in awe of how we throw things. We have a very small staff, you know, for our community and most of them are doing much more than one job where, you know, if you go to the county or bigger cities like Doral, they have three people or four people doing, you know, one title, with one title. And we just constantly throw things at you of, you know, things that need to be done, concerns that we have or events that we'd like to host and, and they just come back and, and, and the positivity of it. Instead of fighting us, he just goes, okay. It's, you know, Meg, if you want a parade, well,
For us, it's, it's, it's good for the community. That's, that's our philosophy in the Parks and Recreation Department. As long as it's for the kids and for the people in the community, and we're all for it. There are challenges, but like anything we do in life, there's challenges. You just got to step up to the plate and just get it, figure it out. And you're right, I have a great staff. If I sit them down and tell them, wait, we got to get this done, we just figure out a way. We make it happen. It's just the way it is. It's, it's good. It's great for me to have the people that I have working for me because they make it much easier. If I ask them to do something, we, we really don't gripe about it. We just figure it out.
Well, that's wonderful. And again, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Pushing us on this. I think it will be a nice event for
Too kind of a mayor, thank you.
He has to go through the water zone, though.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Hey, Omar, see.
Tied down to one of the cars.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on this. It's just an update for the Fourth of July, right?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Omar.
Thanks a lot.
Next item, new business. We have none. Okay, now we're on item twelve, other business. And we have item twelve A, request by Councilwoman Bravo to discuss the advisory boards.
Yep, all right, so I know that, what was it, maybe in our, our second, or pretty much at our workshop where Mayor Mitchell brought up the, you know, maybe we want to consolidate the amount of advisory boards or boards that we have in place that are probably not useful for us right now or, or not ever. So I went ahead and I did a, this is my proposal. Proposal to eliminate the following boards and/or committees mentioned below by sharing the reasons and justification for its dissolution. Because I just don't want to come up and dissolve without explaining the reasons. First would be the Architectural Review Board. Then we'll talk about the Golf and Country Club. The third is a Code Review Board. And the last one is a Memorial Committee. In general, I think recommendations, requests, proposals and other items that arise within the city departments or community can be brought forward to city council workshop, to a city council workshop or council meeting through its respective department head or assigned chair, kind of like what we did at the workshop, which was a, a nice time or, or appropriate moment so that we can get aware of what's going on in our different departments. I think this will help eliminate one extra mediation process and time consumption together with reducing indirect costs associated with each board and committee. Dissolving these five boards and/or committees will provide for a more uniformed approach to city consensus and applying the best approach and practices in accordance to city ordinances together with a comprehensive review of the subject matter and legal counsel recommendations from the city attorney. So those are the four boards that I would like to dissolve and we'll get further on to the reasons. I'll try to make this a little bit quick, you know, it's late. And then my proposals to add on is our Economic Development Advisory Board and our Nuisance Abatement Board. I think these two boards are very, very important for our city. Right now, we have a lot of ramifications that we're dealing with off of Thirty Sixth Street. It's a continued topic. We talked about it earlier today. So I'm just trying to, not only this would apply to the issue of Thirty Sixth Street, but just any nuisance in general, whether it be Thirty Sixth Street, a vacation rental home, anything in, in, in what has to do with a nuisance. Kind of like a little cushion that we can use to put not ordinances in place, but maybe how can I say it? A repercussion, you know, act on repercussion. And maybe we can, you know, potentially get these business owners on Thirty Sixth Street and hotels to be a little bit more responsible. Mayor Mitchell said earlier today, having them be exactly more responsible or having their own type of onsite security to alleviate having our police go out there on a continuous basis. I'm just looking for a possible option where we can momentarily be effective and attaining our quality of life. And I just thought maybe a nuisance abatement board would be a good start. And, you know, if, if it works out, it'd be something to keep. And if we see that it's super relevant and it's not working for us, then in, in the future, we can, I guess, just dissolve it. But I don't think it, it can't hurt not having it, especially we're a very small city. And I think we need to do something and create some sort of awareness where on Thirty Sixth Street, the owners of hotels know that we have On Thirty Sixth Street, the owners of hotels know that we have this in our city and it's within our right to, to exercise it if we, if we wish to. So on the Architectural Review Board, I'm gonna start with the proposal to dissolve. The first meeting they had was March seventh, two thousand and seven. The last meeting was November eighth, two thousand and seventeen. They've had a total of three meetings since two thousand and seven, so that's in the last fourteen years, they've met three times. The purpose that I disclosed there was taken directly from our city website, so I've provided the link. It's kind of a purpose, but it's not relevant to a general purpose, it's more inconclusive to. Of Thirty Sixth Street and the Central Business District area. My reason to dissolve is I believe that the zone, not that I believe, based on what I'm seeing here on, on the purpose intended. When they initially opened up this board. Reason to dissolve is the zoning and planning board already undertake the assurance and execution of the above mentioned items. In respects to uniformity standards across the city. The zoning board conducts, coordinates, recommends, monitors and oversees the effectiveness status of comprehensive plans. And recommends to the city commission such changes as may be required based on the current charter and code ordinances. The Architecture Review Board was more inclined to a design review board based on their purpose and description that they had on our city website. Which can be considered as a special committee which is termed. So if they needed to maybe open up a special committee and I think a couple of weeks back. Heidi even elaborated on that type of special committee option. Where, you know, if there's a project that, that needs to be worked on and it's gonna take a little bit more time than, you know, the regular business days. Then we can go ahead and incorporate a special committee and which is termed and typically it's for about a year. But if at the end of the year, we feel that, you know, the project needs to continue, you know, council could go ahead and approve an extension. I don't know if anybody has any comments on the Architectural Review Board?
I, through the chair, I have always been in favor of the elimination of this board. And I think as history speaks to itself, they've caused us some difficult, that particular board of all of them has caused us some major difficulty over the years. Relative to projects, I think the manager would bear us out on that, previous, previous city managers as well, through some of the projects that we underwent. So I am in agreement with you on that one, Councilwoman.
Councilman, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm, as, as long as the staff feels like they have the personnel to do. To make architectural design recommendations, I don't know, Chris probably isn't on still, but. But maybe, Mr. London, do you, do you think that the staff has personnel that can, if needed, can make the. Those kinds of like, those kinds of calls, architectural design recommendations?
Well, usually that's a combination between the, like, Councilwoman said, between the city planner. And you have the Board of Adjustment. Zoning and Planning Board, so called that, review that, so. I, I agree that, I think this, this is something that if you ever needed one for any specific project. You would call a special committee or something like that to, to handle it, so. Listen to, I, I was gonna bring this up, but I know what Heidi's gonna.
On, on this board, well, you may recall that the ordinance that was presented to you a couple of meetings ago. Included the Architectural Review Board. I've since realized that there is legislation that the state was considering. The state legislator was considering this session and I don't know yet if it's become law. Where that law could affect Architectural Review Boards and some of our zoning abilities. So I, I'm gonna do the research on that, assuming that the council wants to move in the direction of eliminating the board. I will get back to you with information on whether or not that is still a good idea in light of the state. Legislation, so I'll have more for you on that. And just since, since I have the, the mic for a moment. Looking at Councilwoman Bravo's memo, the four boards are to, that would be eliminated under her. Proposal are, in addition to the Architectural Review Board, it's the Golf and Country Club Advisory Board, the Memorial Committee. And the Code Review Board. Those are the four boards that. Were included in the last ordinance, so assuming that council is inclined to eliminate those boards. Then that ordinance is pretty much ready to go and we can bring that back to you very quickly.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we.
I think we can, we don't have to do each of these individually then, right? Heidi, we can at the end decide which ones, but.
No, I, I think that, I, I know, I know Councilwoman Bravo was trying to be brief and, and get to the point. On, on all four of the boards that she was recommending to eliminate. If, I, I think if I just have direction from council. That you want, that you agree and that you want to eliminate those four boards. Then we can bring back an ordinance that eliminates all four boards and it would be one ordinance doing all four at the same time. Separately, so that's on the dissolution of boards section. I know that Councilwoman Bravo's, the second part of her proposal is to bring forth the Nuisance Abatement Board. As well as the Economic Board, which I know Mayor, you have an item on the agenda to address the. Business Economic Advisory Board, so I'll let you, I think we should probably maybe combine that discussion. Once you've presented your item, Mayor, and then as far as the Nuisance Abatement Board, that is something that. My partner, Jose Arango and I are working on and we hope to have a draft or, an ordinance available. For your review and then presentation at a council meeting, hopefully in the next few weeks. So those, those last two are pretty much under review, so if we can get direction on the first four boards. On whether to eliminate or not, then we'll bring back something at a future meeting.
So, do you need a vote for each board or you just want a consensus from us? Or should we go ahead and vote on each board? In this one, it's probably better to go ahead and take a quick vote on the Architectural Review Board. Alright, I just wanted to say, if you notice in all these, in the ordinance that Heidi's referring to is the one that was presented, our second meeting, which I understand it was to. Get rid of some of these boards, because I, I felt there's no reason to have boards that never meet. But I understand that it was just too soon and, and the council needed time to, to kind of look into this. And so I'm glad that Councilwoman Bravo brought it back on the agenda. But I'd like you to notice on each of these boards, the total meetings since they were created. Which speaks for itself as to the utility of the board and for most of them, when they did meet in two thousand and seventeen, that was because. We had a workshop in two thousand and seventeen because of this issue and we asked all the boards to meet and they met some of them. You know, that hadn't met, met that one time, but there was really no reason for them to continue, so. I think that that speaks for itself, the total number of meetings since they were created.
Mayor, the question that I had was the only question that I had on all four of these. And, and so I want to thank Councilwoman Bravo for, for, for putting this together and then reviewing it. You know, I, I'm leaning in favor of dissolving those, those boards.
Through the chair, I, thank you Mayor, I have a problem, I have no problem with the Architectural Review Board. I think that can easily be picked up by adjustment and zoning and, and by the way. Between those two boards aforementioned, there's a lot of architects on those boards. So that, that's one of the reasons that I'm in favor of eliminating the Architectural Review Board. Now, golf and country club? Let's not jump ahead here, we've got a good thing going right now. But who knows what happens, would a poll, would a poll leaves?
But I think that the issue is, Councilman, that we can reappoint a task force or committee.
We can, we can do an ad hoc committee, we could, we could, but these, this, this, this particular board used to meet. And a lot of these guys that are on this board are avid golfers, they're members of the community, they live on the course, they know what goes on. And they offer valuable information. Over the years, they have, I get it, they haven't met in a long time, you know why? Cause we haven't asked them to. We've never asked them to meet. It, it, it shouldn't be and I totally agree with some members up here that have pointed out that they, that if, if they're not meeting, why have them? I agree with that. Whose fault is that? Ours? They shouldn't have to, they shouldn't have to come up or create reasons to meet. We should be telling them, we should be directing them what to do. And that's why I disagree with the elimination of golf and country. Code review for obvious reasons, we have a lot to cover in that area and we're not capable of doing that up here twice a month, even with special meetings, impossible. And finally, the, the Memorial Committee, we have a couple of things on, on the horizon with that going forward in this, in this town. One or two meetings ago when they came in with the thing in Medley and also the War Memorial, which is rather, which is also on the horizon. So I'd be very cautious for us to eliminate those three. Architectural, you got my vote.
Okay, in respects to the Golf and Country Club, the, the reason I put it on there is because if they were supposed to meet on every second Wednesday of the month. They would have to date a hundred and thirty-two meetings. If they don't have a reason to meet, then why have the board? I think that one of the main reasons that we have a, a country club and department head. Is so that he can, he plays the vital role. He's the one that's really telling us what's going on with the country club. He's interacting with his local customers, his not local customers. I think we have to have more of a bridge between our. Our golf director that's onsite every day, talking, interacting with the golfers. Versus having people on the board that don't really want to, I, I understand that they're not gonna, they don't have enough issues to come to, to council. And I, I'm thinking that that's maybe the reason why we should eliminate. I think Paul has a very important role here where he can, I put my reason to dissolve. Was the department head together with respected staff members as needed may suggest recommendations, requests or proposals to city manager. And city council through a city council workshop, just how we did the other day, which was great. He was able to get a lot off his chest because he works there onsite. The golf director plays a vital role, which is to apply the major and basic responsibilities of some which consists of implementing and monitoring budget. Hiring, training, supervising all staff members, marketing the golf course and merchandise. Monitoring the quality of the golf course, help to find platforms where they can link resident golf members and non-resident golf members. These board members are not even interacting with Paul at this point, I don't think.
I, through the, through the chair, I respectfully disagree, Councilwoman, with that. Because I can tell you that my, my appointee, Mark Seyfried, has been on there forever and he was responsible for junior golf coming to this town. With Mark, when Mike Aldrich was here and prior to him, when, when, when Dan left and Mike Aldrich come in. So, and that was Major League, for that to happen, that went on for a while. Hey, look, we can't just sit up here and say, hey, this is wonderful, we have, we got a great golf course, we don't need to touch it, just leave it be. No, it can be better than it is now. And you've got valuable people in this community that are sitting on that thing, let's give them something to do. Or have them, give them maybe one thing to do and they're gonna come back to us with three or four. These are good minds, that's what I'm saying to you.
I know, but I don't see why we have to look for them, they have, I don't know.
And, and so they don't meet every month, maybe they meet every two months or three months, but still, keep, keep.
But I think that that was what, at the workshop that we had in two thousand and seventeen on the boards. With, you know, discussing this is that we said, okay, of all the boards, we want them to meet this year. And to meet after that, I believe we said at least every other month. Is that correct? And it didn't happen, they met once and there was no reason for them to continue meeting, so we're kind of like in this. And the issue is that what happens is.
And also, I'm sorry, Mayor, a lot of them decided they would meet as needed. So whenever they were assigned a task, that's when they would meet, otherwise they saw no reason why they should, so.
Meeting and, and it's staff time, for them to be meeting at night, our staff has to be here, you know, we have to allocate the. So it, there's a cost involved because we have staff to meet and, and I know they're extremely, I'm, I. No one is more into tapping into the professional expertise of, you know, of our community than I am. However, I just don't see any value in telling people we're appointing you to the committee and by the way, the committee never meets. I think it's much more effective when an issue comes up or several issues come up that we want. That, you know, resident input, guidance from a, a good committee or board to create a task force or committee. To address that for these boards, not for the boards that are meeting regularly and have, you know, and are doing their, an amount. Immense amount of work for us with their recommendations, you know, those are functioning well. What we're talking about, I think what Councilwoman Bravo, the ones she's identifying, are the ones that you can see haven't met in five years. And we're appointing someone to it, to a board that in essence, if they were going to meet, we'd have to go through the. The trouble of trying to find out, are they still available, can they meet instead of just, this is, I'm appointing this person to a task force. That I, it seems like even the length, length of time of how speedily they could meet. Would be, would take a lot longer because these boards are in place and we have to, they're only supposed to meet every two months. And it's this Monday, instead of creating a task force that, you know, we ask them to in the next two weeks to meet. So it's not at all that I devalue the, the process, it's that. Will, you know, deal with this when it's necessary instead of just lingering them and it looks to me. It's embarrassing to, on our website, we have sixteen boards and we say then the city has sixteen boards and half of them. Haven't met in five years. Some of those people are no longer, you know, interested in even in serving and. And if they were to meet, they'd all look at each other and not know, you know, they haven't worked together. So it, I think that that is why we're considering these. And it allows, by eliminating some boards that are basically have been dormant for five years. It allows the creation of new boards that, you know, everything changes and right now there's two timely committees or boards. That we probably do need and so that opens up the ability. To create new ones that are, are more in meeting with our current needs.
Certainly the second recommendation for an addition, the Nuisance Abatement Board, co-compliance could easily handle that. And we're talking about creating a new one and eliminating golf and country club? What?
Mayor, if I can interject, with respect to Councilman Best or Vice Mayor Best's remarks. The Nuisance Abatement Board does need to be separate, is my understanding, Jose is, is the, admittedly. I am not the expert on nuisance abatement boards, my partner is, so I'll defer to him, but I do believe that that does need to be a separate board. So I think if. As, as far as moving forward, that Nuisance Abatement Board ordinance will be coming to you. I don't want to promise that it's gonna be at the next meeting, but it will be in the next couple of meetings. The Economic Advisory Board, I'll let Mayor Mitchell present on that because I think, I know she's been really spearheading that. And it sounds like there's a lot of consensus on that. But I think I just need sort of, and, and maybe you may want, since this is Councilwoman Bravo's item. Councilwoman Bravo, maybe you want to make a motion to direct staff to eliminate. To bring back an ordinance eliminating the four boards listed. I understand that Vice Mayor Best is not on board with all four boards. But it sounds like there's consensus from the rest of you, so.
Well, I, I would like to say with the Memorial Committee, I do agree with Councilman Best that perhaps that's something, even though it hasn't met. That it's perhaps something that we should utilize because we have the memorial that I know the Legion is working on. There's several and we just had a presentation recently, so I can see why, even though we haven't bothered to ask them to meet. That right off the bat, there are probably, and Vice Mayor, there's probably, if we ask them to meet now, so that the presentation could be made to them of what the Legion is.
I couldn't agree with you more on that.
So perhaps, at, at least for me, I would like to, in keeping with what Vice Mayor's saying, this is probably something that. Is a timely thing right now, is something that we're going through a lot of, or several items that are related to. What a Memorial Committee could review and assist us with.
And I, and I think through, through the chair, I think also relative to the Code Review Board, we had some discussion on that at our last meeting, as we all recall. And that was to the point where the city attorney was figuring out how they could start. Kind of start blocking this stuff and do some at a time, some at a time, some at a time.
Heidi, could you elaborate on that? Because my understanding with the Code Review Board is that the code is so complicated that it really.
Yeah, I, I, it was, it was not. It was not my recommendation that we retain the Code Review Board from, from my. You know, if you're asking for my advice on, on whether to retain or. on whether to retain or eliminate the code review board, my recommendation would be to eliminate, simply because, and this is really with any code revision that we propose, that the council proposes or that comes from staff, you have two readings, you have first reading on an ordinance and second reading. If there's a zoning ordinance, you can always send it to your zoning and planning board to review. So then there would be a third, you know, consideration. You always have the ability to workshop an ordinance and, you know, dedicate a whole meeting to just listening to it. The public always has the ability to provide you with their feedback during the public hearing. So there's lots of opportunities for review and input from the public. I think that oftentimes, there are a lot of legal considerations and technical considerations that a code, a board like the code review board may not appreciate. And so when you have a complex ordinance, it's gonna require your professional staff, whether it's the manager, the planner, myself, or someone else who's an expert, also having to sit with them at a separate meeting. So I think that you have competent staff all around. And so when we bring you an ordinance, it's, I can say it's been vetted, at least through my office and through the manager's office. So I think that in that case, you do have that professional feedback. And then, of course, getting the feedback and opinions from the community is obviously very important. And you want to hear from them, but I don't know that it's necessarily required to be through a code review board. So I would personally leave that process to the inherent process of adopting an ordinance. You know, you can hear from people when the ordinance is brought forth at first reading. You can get public input between first and second reading. You can get input at second reading. So there's plenty of opportunities, if receiving public feedback is the concern.
Well, I think one of the recommendations that came out of our workshop when we discussed this item was that the city attorney would get us pricing on doing the different parts of the.
It's kind of what I was going after, William, earlier, yeah.
Is that correct, Heidi?
As far as the zoning, zoning code, yes. We, I think we should have pricing or at least estimates so that you have an idea of what it would be like to do a code review, a code rewrite, I'm sorry, of the zoning code. And again, that is probably your most technical code and probably the most precious part of a city's code is your zoning code. So you want to make sure that you have that properly vetted, not only with legal, manager, city planner, but I think in the context of doing a comprehensive review and rewrite of your zoning code, I think it's probably best to have an outside consultant, and that's what I was leaning towards. And once you, once, assuming that the council wants to move forward with doing a zoning code review and rewrite, any consultant is going to engage in public engagement and have meetings, whether you call them a town hall or a workshop or a public information session, whatever it might be. They're gonna meet with people from your community and they're gonna listen to what the people's opinions are, what they want to see, what they don't want to see. And they'll take that into consideration in drafting any revisions if needed. So I think that there, I know that there would be a public engagement process, specific zoning.
And I think that, from my understanding, from speaking to Heidi and from Dan in the past about this with the code review, because I kept saying our codes are outdated, why aren't they meeting? Is that it's such a, the knowledge in order to revise the code is not just, oh, I would like to change the code. It, you know, it has to be what's legally allowed and what the county, you know, and you have to have knowledge of state legislation and county legislation and all these, you know. And if we change this code, that it applies to something else. So it's a much more complicated project, much more complicated project I've come to realize than just, you know, having some residents sit and say, you know, we'd like to switch this and this and this.
Mayor?
Yes?
Through the chair. I understand that there are some projects, some memorial projects that are coming down. But, you know, by your own logic, a committee that hasn't, that's met once eight years ago and has met twice since nineteen eighty-five, getting them together to meet about these upcoming projects strikes me as being the same as getting an ad hoc committee together at this point. So I just think, you know, I'm in favor of just dissolving that committee and then, you know, getting some people together to help us when there's a need. I think that, I'd like to propose, since it's Councilwoman Bravo's item, that she moved to just get all four of these dissolved and see where we all stand on the issue.
I'll second that.
I'll, is that a motion?
Well, not, I'm gonna ask her to do the motion because it's her item and I don't want to.
I would like to make a motion.
And then that would mean, I'm assuming that we would bring back the ordinance, Heidi would work on the ordinance.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, since we're brokering here, right? I'll buy to three, I'll back off on memorial, I'll back off on code review, and I'll back off on architectural. I am not backing off on golf and country club. Hear me on that one.
I think, if I, if I may, it sounds like the one that, that there's some contention on is golf, Vice Mayor. So I think, like Councilman Bahat was suggesting, since it's Councilwoman Bravo's item, I would just let her make the motion on whichever three or four boards she wants to eliminate. And certainly, we can bring back that ordinance. If the motion is to eliminate all four boards, we'll bring back an ordinance eliminating all four boards. And between first and second reading, if there's a change of heart.
Remember, folks, before we vote on this, remember, the country club has seen three or four directors in my time up here, and we've seen four or five beverage people come in and out, come and go, come and go, come and go. These people are valuable, don't make a mistake up here.
Councilman Best, I just wanted to mention, but you brought, you just brought up a good point. When we were going through with the beverage changes and all, the board didn't meet. We didn't ask them to meet and help us with that, which would have been a good time to get their input. And there again, and I'm not blaming the board by any means. Everyone who serves on a board is willing to serve on the board, God bless them, you know, they're willing to help us. The onus is on us that the council will vote.
Ask them to.
And we, you know, the same times that you've mentioned, that these are things that we probably should have utilized the board for input, especially with the beverage and.
I can recall when that happened, Mayor, I can recall when that happened. And all five of those people that are on that golf and advisory, it's not just golf. It's country club too, it's the food and beverage and it's everything. And during that period of time that you just mentioned, Mayor, I in fact did seek advice of all five members that are aboard, even though they didn't meet, I still, and got some valuable information from those people. Had they met en masse, who knows what would have happened.
I would like to add, Mayor and Council, that as far as the food and beverage concession contracts, those were evaluated by an evaluation committee as part of the procurement process. So there was a committee appointed to review and see, you know, what would be best for the city. And then it came to council. So I would like to remind you that there is a committee that looked at that. And again, and I think the mayor has mentioned this a few times. Anytime that you have a specific issue that you would like a committee to review, we can very easily convene and do a resolution, a motion, saying we'd like to create a committee to review whatever it may be and move forward. And that way you don't have these standing committees that are going on perpetually unnecessarily. And you're losing, frankly, people who are, and I don't think this has been mentioned. And, you know, I don't generally get involved in the policy aspects of your discussions. I really try to leave that to you. But I do want to remind you that you do have a limited pool of people who are willing to participate and give their time and volunteer to sit on these boards. So, you know, you don't want to tie somebody's hands and having them, for example, appointed to the Memorial Committee, when you could really use their resources and knowledge and love for the city on another board, say, the nuisance abatement board or the Economic and Business Development Board. So just keep that in mind.
Don't get me wrong, I have no problem with change, I can do that good. But I just, I got a strong feeling on golf and advisory, golf and country club.
Is there a motion? Yes, I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring in ordinance at a future meeting, eliminating the four boards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote.
There was a motion again, I'm sorry.
To Councilwoman, I'll let you read.
To eliminate the four boards in the next council meeting.
Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Best?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's see, the next agenda item. Glasses. Read it. Oh, okay, it's a request by me.
Yes.
To discuss the creation. Well, let's go back one, because actually you had a proposal, Councilwoman Bravo, to add on the nuisance abatement board, right? And that was part of the discussion of the advisory board. So let's go to the nuisance abatement board.
So the nuisance abatement board is to promote, protect, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of residents and citizens by imposing administrative fines and other non-criminal penalties in order to provide an equitable, expeditious, expedacious, effective method of enforcing ordinances under circumstances when a pending or repeated violation continues to exist. Right now, we do have an ordinance in respects to, actually, we don't have one. It was more of the excess police usage. That's kind of maybe an example of where I'm getting at. But this can apply to anything, it could apply to the vacation rentals if they don't follow by the existing guidelines that we have now, which I don't know if we do. But it's just giving you an idea of any sort of nuisance that there could be imposed, imposed fines, even non-criminal penalties, it could be somebody, I don't know. I would have to look up an example of that, that's non-criminal, criminal. But it could be, you know, the fact that the lady came up earlier and she says that, you know, there's a lot of littering, littering in her front lawn, and it's like a consistent leaving trash and stuff like that. It's non-criminal, but it's a nuisance, and it is coming from the surrounding areas. The reason to add on, the nuisance and abatement board provides the community a tool to encourage owners to take responsibility for preventing recurring nuisance activities on their property. Can also be used as a strategy to prevent abandonment. Some recurring criminal slash nuisance activities are, but not limited to, the unlawful sale, delivery, or possession of controlled substances, narcotics, youth and street gang criminal activity, prostitution or solicitation of prostitution, lewd and last division activity. Last, wait, last division, yes.
The civvies.
Thank you. Illegal sale, wait, I already did that, right? Yeah, illegal sale, possession, or consumption of alcoholic beverage, other criminal activities that are a danger to the public health and safety and welfare of our community. This is an option to help leverage public safety expenses and initiatives while working to obtain the bed tax currently in progress. I'm not saying that once we get the bed tax, we want to eliminate it, but maybe we have, you know, two options. We have an additional perk. The perfect example was this lady coming up here earlier today, a resident, talking about how she's seen, you know, prostitutes or whatever it is, you know, there was a lot of items here actually that she touched that I wasn't expecting to hear today. But this is the specific idea of why we would need a board like this. And at the end of the day, I understand that they're private businesses, but private businesses do have responsibilities. It's just like, you know, everyone else does. I think if we make this come to light and Thirty-Sixth Street and everyone is aware of that we have this, that we can use against them to follow guidelines. Unfortunately, we're not, you know, doing things that good of will. But, you know, that's why we have rules and regulations. And I think this is a rule and regulation that we should have an exercise within our city to promote the start and encouragement of a cleaner Thirty-Sixth Street. Not only that, we have problematic properties. I'm not gonna get into specifics, but, you know, there's problematic areas or properties that can also fall within this nuisance abatement board. And not so much necessarily, they already know that by calling up a police continued amount of times, it's going to trigger a penalty. So unfortunately, if you don't hit the pocket, you're not gonna correct the situation, that's just kind of.
Mayor? So I appreciate starting the discussion here out of, and, but I don't think then we should have council start working on an ordinance, and, I mean, I feel like I need more. I also feel like there's some things the Councilwoman brought up, the, you know, nuisance that are brought up with the short-term vacation rentals and also like problem property. I think some of that stuff, there's kind of overlap with code enforcement. I know that Heidi had talked about how this had been used in, I think, City of Miami because of some of the undesirable hourly hotels along Biscayne Boulevard. I'd like to, I would personally like to talk with council more and kind of get a sense of how this would kind of fit and work. That's just my opinion on it. I feel like we did that, like, we discussed dissolving the boards, you know, the ordinance came. We felt like we needed more time, now we've had more time. Like, I feel like this is something that I would want more time on.
Mayor?
Through the chair, if I might, there's one thing that just, to me, if I, in looking at this nuisance abatement board, there's one thing on here, having read through all these things that this is inclusive of, there's one thing that is not even on there, and to me, it just jumps off the page, noise.
Well, it's code enforcement.
So.
I'm speaking to your point.
I think, I think, as I've mentioned at other council meetings in the past, this is a, the nuisance abatement board is an idea that we have been speaking about internally, myself, the manager, code enforcement, building, police. We've all been discussing this for probably the last eight months. So it is something that we are currently working on. We will be bringing you a draft. And as I had promised you, I think at the workshop, before it even comes to first reading, what I would like to do is provide you with a copy of that draft before it hits the agenda, before it moves forward, so that we can talk about what the ordinance actually does and what it doesn't do. I think you've heard me say this before, I am not a proponent of adopting laws to do things that you already have laws to do. So with respect to noise, you already have laws on the books to address noise. You have a code enforcement process. That's not exactly what a nuisance abatement board is intended to address. It's really intended to address some of these more egregious issues involving illegal, frankly, criminal activity. So I will be sending you, I don't need, personally, I don't need a motion on this board. We are working on it, you will have a draft, we will go over it with you individually. And then we'll, you know, once everyone's sort of been briefed, we'll bring it forth for first reading.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
So I think that sounds good because Councilwoman Bravo is bringing it up for discussion. It kind of already gets us thinking about that. I think one of the issues, Heidi, that I know, and we've talked about it months ago, you know, I think at the beginning of the year about, you know, the code that's in place that says we can fine businesses when, for excessive police calls. But evidently, there's, you know, we really can't, you know, based on what that says. So I think that this is where we're heading with this, is hoping to allow us. So I think that this is where we're heading with this, is hoping to allow us, you know, more ability to address these, you know, ongoing businesses, which tend to be, it seems, for the most part, some of the, our hotels, you know, with the excessive police calls. So is that, everyone, we're on page, we know something's coming, that you're preparing something for us for our review, but it's,
Yes.
we have an idea of what it is.
Fine.
Okay.
Yes.
So we don't need to take a vote on this or anything. All right, great. All right, the next agenda item is a request by me to discuss the creation of, and it's kind of similar to what's here. I actually was calling it a business and, and I've been discussing this with Heidi, working with her on it. And she's going to, if the council directs, you know, her, if we agree, then she is develop, going to develop an ordinance for us to review. And the purpose of this, what I'm looking, thinking of, is a business and economic development committee. Not a board, but a committee, kind of like a task force. The purpose is to promote new businesses, to see how we can attract new businesses to Miami Springs, and how we can assist the existing businesses to do better. And it would be what I'm envisioning, and again, it'll be up for discussion, is that each council member appoints two people. That way it gives us, you know, it's not just one appointee, if the appointee doesn't show up, or they don't have a quorum. This way it gives us, you know, the ability to appoint two, uh, people to the board.
Mayor, would that committee be temporary?
The committee would, and, and again, this is something Heidi and I have been discussing back and forth. What I envision is, um, we'll ask them to provide a report to us within a year, or, or they can provide sooner reports, but a report within a year, and then at the end of the year, we can decide to continue it, or that be it. But they'll have some urgency as to, you know, really, you know, look at our community, and my understanding, William, and, and Vice Mayor, you may know this, years and years ago, the city had actually paid for a consulting firm.
All the time.
To kind of do that, right? And then I don't think the city followed that because, but I think part of that is, you know, it was outside consultants telling us, you know, what needs to be done with kind of a cookie cutter basis. And even though I'm, I know a lot of their recommendations were quite good, this committee is more us appointing residents, it doesn't have to be a resident. I'll leave that up to you, because if you know somebody who's the head of the, you know, whatever, Beacon Council, and they're willing to serve in our committee, by no means do, you know, we want to, to keep them from helping us.
But you're suggesting a sunset provision on this, basically.
I, I, yes, and in talking to Heidi, I, I think it won't be automatic, we'll renew it. But the idea is, you know, for like a year basis, for them to really study the community and, and come up with recommendations as to what the city, what the council can do to, you know, to improve our, our business and economic development.
I've, I've often thought about this, this particular item, and, and, uh, not specifically named, as you named it, but, uh, to attract business to the Springs. And I've been told by three city managers through the years, that, you know what, you know how that works in this town? They come to, they come to the manager, and the manager disseminates to Chris and guys like that, and, 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 and that's what really develops people wanting to come. Because they, they do the carrot thing, you know, they, they can say yea or nay. Something like, a board like this would have no power, per se, other than to advise, right? Advisory board.
But, you know, they'd be close to, hopefully, they'll be composed of business owners here, you know.
I'm not saying I disagree with it, but I'm saying that I, I wonder what, how purposeful it would be.
Through the chair?
Through the chair.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
This is a subject close to my heart, right, that, that I, one of the reasons I decided to get involved with running for a city council was, um, you know, from a pro-business and pro-development perspective, bottom line to, for revenues for the city, right, to augment and improve, um, um, revenue. However, I do know by talking to folks who've been around a long time, not only Councilwoman Best and other folks, that, uh, this is not the first rodeo with this, with this issue. And, uh, when you first mentioned it, Madam Mayor, what I remember I said was something like, let's do a comprehensive effort to help our city staff and so forth. Grab the bull by the horns, so to speak. So, how many small businesses do we have? How many vacant areas do we have? What are the sort of hot topics and things that people would like to see? You know, through any kind of market analysis, and so, so I agree with the concept of a committee with a quasi-finite date. But the product that I'm interested in is that. In other words, these are recommendations to this, to the, to the council, to the city managers, and look, we've looked at some best practices, and, and, and therefore I agree completely, and I like the idea of having folks on a committee like this, who are not necessarily members of the community, but can bring a certain set skills to, to this, to this process. And that is what I would welcome absolutely, wholeheartedly, and I think that we're on that moment. And, and, and lastly, I would say it's time to think outside of the box, so to speak. I mean, haven't, I can't say I've been a successful business owner, but I learned a lot from that one failure. That there are, and, and I think you mentioned it, uh, Mayor, in, in the, in the notes, I don't have them with me here, about the challenges to mid-sized cities and small cities in terms of economic development and business development. I, I, I see it principally as, as an effort for revitalizing our downtown area. But I think that all businesses in Miami Springs and, and quasi-business districts, you know, on, on Royal Point Ciana, on, you know, westward, further down Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street, including the possibility of attracting one or two large enterprises to the city. I talked about, uh, you know, tech development and how the city, how the Miami is becoming a hub for that. Our proximity to the airport gives us some opportunities. There are some areas in the eastern part of the city that we could look at for future development, whether it's the city hall or any economic. So I would, I would, I would wholeheartedly support this effort to appoint this committee. But I would give them as much direction as we could without stifling the creativity of people who could come to this and bring ideas that we have not thought about. So I like the idea of maybe not necessarily putting a date on it, say, look, by this time, we would, this is, this is the product that we want. And these are the elements of the product that we want.
And Councilman, and I appreciate, and I totally agree with your comments that you've made, and particularly that our location, we are a gem that hasn't been discovered, because our location, right by the airport, but also right by One Twelve, by easy access to Eight Twenty-Six, to the One Twelve Expressway, to I Ninety-Five, to Eight Thirty-Six, if you just go down Lejeune, makes us an ideal location for businesses other than just airports, I mean, other than hotels. And I really feel that once we attract the right business, it's going to be a domino effect, and several other businesses will realize, oh my God, this is, you know, just a perfect location. So, um, again, what I want to say is, all we're doing here would be to direct, Heidi, that it's, we have a consensus that we, she will prepare an ordinance for us to review, and then we'll massage it, this is not, we're not appointing anyone right now or anything, this is just, again, the thought process of, you know, having an ordinance that, you know, proposes more details on what this, um, Business and Economic Development Committee would be. I agree, it has to have a termination date, because, you know, as far as when we want the report, because we want them, we want the sense of urgency, that, you know.
Yes.
Yes, this is property development, is what it is, basically.
I have a, so, I have a question similar to the point, like, like, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, Councilman Vasquez.
Oh, no, it, it, the, the question was that Councilman Fajie raised, and I think Heidi said that we would have a pre, I don't know what she called it, a pre-project, a pre-discussion piece, uh, to give us some time.
We'd get a draft before it went to first reading.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, that we apply the same principle to this.
So. And even after the draft, you know, we still discuss it.
Yes, no, no, for sure. But I'll meet on this.
And Heidi, I have a, Mayor, I had a question for Heidi. Heidi, the, this would necessitate a, an, an ordinance, I was trying, I was going to ask you, my question was going to be like, what, what distinguishes a committee from a board, an advisory committee versus an advisory board?
Um, so I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. This will be brought to you not as an ordinance, but as a resolution. As you've heard me mention before, for whatever reason, the city has put a lot of its boards or committees, task forces, whatever you want to call them, collective legions, to say, boards, under, they, they've codified it by ordinance. That really is creating, frankly, an unnecessary amount of work. It's expensive to adopt ordinances. It's expensive to put it into the code, as I'm sure Erica, even though I can't see her, is probably nodding and saying, yes, it is expensive, and it comes out of the clerk's budget. So this is something that we would, um, I, I would recommend that it be done by resolution in working and speaking with the mayor. And I, I, I know that several of you had reached out to me, uh, it's, you know, after the workshop, saying that you were interested in something like this. So I, I knew that there was consensus among you to, to go in this direction. And so in working with Mayor Mitchell, um, what you'll probably be seeing from us is a resolution that I'll work up with her, and then, um, bring that to you. You know, in general, you're going to see a resolution, uh, incorporating what you've discussed tonight, right? That it's going to be a committee, that it's going to study, advise, and make recommendations to you with regard to marketing the city, attracting new businesses, supporting existing businesses, and providing a vision for what you want this, for, for the city's future economic and business development. And so this board is not going to have decision-making authority, but they are going to provide you with their, with their recommendations. And so what we've sort of discussed preliminarily is that the board would have, as the mayor said, a year to bring you its report and recommendations. And we're going to put in what that report at a minimum should include. And so I think if you want to see specific data points, please, um, let me know those. If, if you want to email me after the meeting, and, and let me know that you'd really love to see this. Um, and then, uh, we can move from there.
Heidi, at, at what point, uh, do you start making decisions about how many members in this board, how they're going to get appointed? Is that going to be in the next resolution, or is that something you're going to work with the mayor on?
All, all of that would be in the resolution. Um, after speaking with the mayor initially, I realized that, um, the city's charter, and not all city charters provide this, so it was, it was my, uh, I, I assumed incorrectly that, that we could appoint people from outside the city. But the city's charter requires that any appointments to boards be city residents. So to the extent that the council would want to appoint someone who is not a resident of the city, my recommendation would be that those people be non-voting members, so that they can provide you with their feedback and recommendations, but not necessarily be voting members.
Does that, does that apply?
This is technically not a board, you're setting up, is it a committee or a task?
So, I was going to.
Whether, whether it's a committee or a board, I would, yes, it would apply.
And, uh, residents, would that include business? That in Miami Springs?
I'm sorry, Mayor, on, on, on my side, the connection, I, I missed your remarks, Mayor. I, I, I heard a question, but I couldn't hear it because my connection.
Well, we'll go ahead, let's, and, and, and I apologize, Heidi had told me it would be a resolution and not an ordinance. So I was using the word ordinance and, and resolution is more applicable, but let's go ahead, and if we have consensus.
Yes.
We'll continue to work on it. I know we, we talked about it a good bit last week, and we'll continue to work on it and put something in front of the board, and then we can, you know, continue to massage it to something that we all agree on.
Last thought on this, having been through many processes like this in my life, it, 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 I think the, the name task force is, is more appropriate to what we're trying to do here, for two reasons. And again, this is vernacular, right? But a task force, you know, has a, has a direction and an urgency to it, number one. And number two, you're asking people to join a task for, sounds more cool than just another committee.
And maybe there needs to be.
I said I don't want a board, because we have advisory boards.
And that's why I said, you know, and I've served on task forces before, you know, you gotta do this, this is what you gotta do.
You want to really get them off the dime?
We should call it a Delta Force.
You want to really get them off the dime, put a suspense date on it.
Okay, is everyone, uh, can test this, and then we'll, a task force, if everyone likes task force better, I'm good with either one. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Heidi. And, um, okay. Item thirteen, reports and recommendations from our city attorney, our esteemed city attorney.
Real quick, I emailed you last week, but I just wanted to let you know in case you missed the email, or in case members of the public are interested. Last week, we had a hearing before the county's unsafe structures board with respect to a property on Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street that's known locally as the airport diner. Uh, we received a favorable ruling from the unsafe structures board. Um, after they heard from the testimony from our building official, Ulysses Hernandez, with the support of the manager, code enforcement, and my office, uh, through my partner, Jose Arango, we, we were successful in obtaining an order requiring the property owner to either repair or demolish the building within thirty days. So we'll be speaking on that later, uh, among ourselves, uh, our, our internal team. But we are very proud of that result, and so we'll keep you abreast of any developments. And that's, I know that's been an important issue for, for all of you and for the residents, so there is movement.
Thank you.
That was good work on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, anything else, Heidi?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
A couple of things, Mayor. We will be having a, uh, so, sort of a groundbreaking at the Circle Project property next week. Tentatively, it looks like it's going to be Wednesday, June third, but, June second. But, uh, I should have confirmation the next day or two, so I'll let you know in case, uh, any of you are available for that. It will probably be at ten AM.
Bring your shovel.
Probably provide them.
Second item, uh, as one of the speakers, uh, that came up, the resident from Manola, I have been talking to Councilman Vasquez, Councilman Fahet, Fahet, about the issue over there, there, there are five really blocks, it's not just Manola, we went through all five of them. The Manola seems to be the worst one. That's the one that's located right behind the, you have Days Inn and the hotel behind it. And we've, we're looking at a way to get closer off the pedestrian sidewalks on both sides to prevent the people from the hotels going into the neighborhoods. And I knew as soon as we did one, I met with some residents out there, and as soon as they saw me in Manola, then I started getting the other street. They're having the same problem. So we looked at all five, we're working up some costs now on different things that we can do to close that off. So probably sometime in June, one of the meetings in June, I will come back and do a presentation for you, what it's going to take to do that. Apart from that, the other thing I had, and I'll leave it to the mayor, uh, about the, uh, I know, I don't know if the new council people are aware of the FDOT plans for Thirty-Sixth Street, where they want to connect from Palmetto down to US One to Biscayne. Originally, we thought it was going to be an overpass all along Thirty-Sixth Street. Now they seem to be, uh, going in another direction, but there's one item in their study, and I'll let, you want to address her?
No, go ahead, William, we met with them last week.
We had, uh, we had, um, at one time, I think they came here and did a presentation.
Did a presentation for us in November, in past November. Did a presentation for us in November, last November.
Um, so we had a Zoom meeting with them last week and we learned something. Uh, at that meeting about a project they separately FDOT was working on called the Iron Triangle. And what that involves is doing an extension of the one twelve to Thirty-Sixth Street. So they will build an overpass from the one twelve and it would end up, and I'm still trying to get, but between Coolidge and Kenmore. Which happens to be where the EB Hotel is. So, um, and we found out about that yesterday, uh, at the meeting last week, so I asked them for the report today, they sent me a copy of it. Um, they've been working on this since twenty fifteen to about twenty eighteen. And they mentioned in the, the report that they've met with municipalities when they were doing it, and I've never heard of it.
Right.
I never heard of it. So I asked her, I asked, I asked her to let us know, you know, when, when they notified us, because I haven't heard about it. But I think that would, yeah.
Is this, I'm, I'm trying to think now, what, what they're talking about. Is this, uh, something like that? When you're coming down Twenty-Fifth, the bridge goes up and around. I kind of use that a lot myself, but anyway, that's another. But that's what they're talking, is that what they're talking about?
We just.
We originally.
Because that area is different, that's all cargo area.
We originally thought that's what they wanted to do on Thirty-Sixth Street, but it looks like that's not what they're going to do, what, what they really want to do in, from, uh, the FDOT and this pro. Is expand, widen Thirty-Sixth Street. And, um, they'll probably have to go on the south side by the airport side if they want to take more because.
Well, we're, we're, we've told them we're totally against it and they're, they're reaching out for, you know, we've, under no uncertain terms, we've told them that. Our community will not support it, it'll dramatically, um, impact negatively, impact our community, because what they want to do is widen it to accept more freight. And basically, that's more freight from Doral, because Doral continues to be allowed to expand. And they need to handle the freight from there and from the cargo and they'll just have to find, I suggested they use the eight thirty-six, widen the eight thirty-six, which is south of the airport and won't impact any residents. But, um.
Only lanes.
Oh, lovely.
On both sides.
So.
But aside from that, the widening, then we find out about this overpass that they want to bring over from the one twelve. Uh, that would end up in the median so that people could, you could have access to the one twelve going or coming out. Uh, but it would be right in front of the EB Hotel. It would run past Coolidge right into, between Coolidge and Kenmore.
Negatively impact our community and also create a, a location for, you know, you know, activities that go on under an overpass, which are not desirable. So we're, um, dealing, but.
So we, we have, uh, we have another Zoom meeting with them on June eighth. But, uh, I asked them and they already told me that on June twenty-fourth and June twenty-ninth. Uh, they're going to be sending out, uh, notices for a public workshop for the public in general to, to join. And express their concerns or, so I'll let you know as soon as I get, uh.
To attend those workshops and.
As I get details on that.
Where would these, those be held, uh, William?
Uh, it's gonna be, well, it's gonna be, the one on the twenty-fourth is physical location, which they haven't announced yet, or virtual option. The one on the twenty-ninth is virtual only.
June twenty-nine? June twenty-nine or May twenty-nine?
June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-four and twenty-nine.
And the twenty-ninth.
So we really need to get the community to attend because, you know, we talked about the negative impact, environmental air quality of additional. Carbon emissions on our residents, um, noise pollution and increased, um, traffic, which would, you know. Basically shut off our Thirty-Sixth Street, which is our main way to enter and, and leave Miami Springs, so, um. The freight will just have to, they have to find a way to direct freight. And again, I suggested south of the airport on the eight thirty-six, which is won't impact, they can build a double-decker there, they can widen that, they can do whatever they want and, you know. And increase east-west traffic on the south side of the airport instead of the north.
There's more room for development down that way.
It, it never fails, we, we, we win one battle with the, uh.
Well, they can expand Twenty-Fifth on the other side of the Palmetto.
It's always, uh, the challenge of, you know.
On this one, on this one, uh, I know the mayor has reached out to, uh, Brian Avalon. Because we're gonna need our state people involved in this to help us with this one.
Um, okay, um, anything else, William, Tammy, Tammy?
Memorial Day celebration, Monday, uh, our emcee here is gonna do the honors, nine AM.
Is it nine or ten, William? Usually, usually.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
Maybe get up an hour earlier.
Oh, we started ten, I thought.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Well, maybe, ma- maybe that's when the program begins, is ten.
No, we'll do it at nine, it's fine. No problem.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, just a couple of real quick things, we're running a little late here, so I'll be brief. Um, I, I don't know if I mentioned at the last meeting, and I don't think it was even over yet, the, the, the high school baseball team of our state team played in the regionals. They made it two games in, they lost the second game, so they're done for the year. But here again, uh, this is the first time in, in the history of the school that they've won three straight district championships in a row. So, uh, Dave Fancher is really putting the program together over here. On Memorial Day, that was just covered, uh, that would be, that's on Monday, the thirty-first, correct? Okay, nine o'clock. And just a thing that, uh, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, on, uh, on the invocation, Father Alfar was to be here tonight to, uh. To do my proclamation that I had, I swapped with the mayor last week. And, uh, he couldn't make it tonight, so we had, I had to call the clerk and thanks, thanks to staff and everything, um, we crafted something here for him. And he, his last mass at Blessed Trinity will be June fifth, which is Saturday, uh, the five-thirty mass in the evening. And five o'clock, sorry, five o'clock, seventeen hundred, and, uh, it's gonna be outside. It's gonna be outside, it's gonna be a bi- a bilingual mass, and then right after that, um, I would love for everybody to really join me and, and. We're gonna present this proclamation to him. Instead of doing it here in chambers, it's kind of better that we do it there and, and, and because. You're gonna get everybody from Blessed Trinity is gonna, you, you couldn't put them in here for ten minutes, you know, and then they all leave, like usually happens. So that's what's gonna happen on the, uh, at five o'clock on June fifth. So, and you had mentioned you might be here, I hope you're here. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Vice.
Nice conversation tonight, all of you. Excellent.
I think we're, um, getting a lot done. All right, Councilwoman Bravo.
Uh, I have no comment. Thank you.
Yep, I mean, uh, what I was gonna bring up, uh, but I'll just, uh, thank, uh, the Mr. Alonso and the staff. Uh, because I've, I've had a bunch of residents, you guys know I live on La Villa and a block away from Thirty-Sixth Street. So I've been kind of keeping some residents at, at bay, uh, on, on those streets, at Dead End, on Thirty-Sixth Street, Muckina, Manola, La Villa, De Soto, De Leon. Uh, and, and I was able to provide some pictures, and great minds think alike, I know that you had mentioned, uh, because you had heard from residents on one street and, and. Right, and at the same time, I think that same week, I approached William about, uh, about residents on my street and, and next, uh, next door, and so I, I took pictures. Uh, and so the residents are really behind that and I tell them like, hey, it's, it's taken care of, we're working on some, I'm glad that you were able to bring it up because. They've asked, you know, hey, do you need us to come in and speak? I was like, no, everybody's aware. So, uh, thank you to the city staff for, uh, looking into that and, and helping to solve that problem.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, much, just wanted to add to that, that, um, the, the way I learned about this was on the campaign trail. And so someone got my literature and called me. This is, hey, you want to deal with these issues, so I went over there, met with two ladies here, I met with ten of them. And I was, and I, and I could see the houses right up to the wall. And, and I went back on another occasion after William and, uh, and last, and last I went there. And someone just walked out of the hotel with a basketball and a big beer. And walked into the neighborhood and began shooting hoops in the basket of the neighbor in front, whose son, um, that, that, that it belongs to, and I've seen tons of picture. This is, um, that's why I mentioned it to the mayor. The whole, some of the hotels, um, are just shabby, bad neighbors. And, and, and this is, William has talked to them and so forth. Um, and at the end of the day, it's about the quality of life of those neighbors. Uh, and I really, because I live on De Leon, but I live on the other side.
Yeah.
And I never go to a dead-end street, right, unless I have to go for some reason, so I went there today and I've actually talked to. A few neighbors and I got, it's a little different view, but all of those, uh, five blocks, um, the complaints are the same. Um, um, you know, disrespectful behavior, garbage, tons of garbage. Um, and, 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 uh, you know, whether it's smoking pot or, you know, nuisance and so forth. And, and, and that's why I'm, I'm glad, William, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a comprehensive look, it's gonna cost money to do. And, and the neighbors are, are aware of that, but I couldn't, you know, I, I don't know, I, I, I'm generally an easygoing guy. I rarely get mad, but I think that would get me really mad to see that kind of behavior on my street. And, uh, i- i- it, it's just unconscionable that, um, that the owners and managers of those hotels. Could care less. There used to be a security guard in that Comfort Inn, um, he got beat up by people in the hotel. He's not there anymore. I mean, this is serious quality of life issues. So, so I'm glad we're looking at it, I'm glad that they came tonight. Uh, I'm sure that when we have a, a, a full discussion on this. They're gonna be here with all those pictures and, and, and you're gonna hear some horror stories about some of the things that have happened. Um. I wanted to ask a question, uh, because I've been asked, so last meeting, there was a, there was a, uh, uh, it was shared, uh, William and Heidi shared. About the city working on a policy, this is relative to the issue that came up about the hashtags and so forth. So I'm just asking if we're, you know, where we are and what, you know, what's, if there's any timeline on that, just to get a sense, so I can. Share with folks who, who asked me about it.
Heidi, can you give us an idea, is that something, uh, for June, I'm expecting, one of the June meetings, the administrative policy for us to review?
As, as soon as it's ready, I will, you will be the first to know. Uh, it is not ready right now, I don't want to promise a specific date, I know that the community is very eager on this issue. Um, but I, I, I can't promise.
Is it in the oven or, or is it in between?
I think the flags will be down, Heidi, by, by, by July fourth, so.
The po- and, and just to make it clear, while the policy may address and will likely address. This issue that is, is causing, uh, some heartburn among members of the community. Um, it is not only for this specific issue, so it's.
It's not really, as, that like Vice Mayor said, the flags will be down by the time this is all, it's to, to prevent this kind of from. Um, you know, from percolating in the, in the future, right, to have a little more.
And, and so, so, so you're not gonna get back a policy that, it, it, you're not gonna get something from, from myself or administration saying. You know, flags with hashtags or signs with hashtags on public property are prohibited, it's, it's not gonna be that narrow, um, to address just this issue. So that's why it, it does involve, um, a lot more thought and, and thoughtfulness than. Then perhaps everyone can appreciate at this point, and when we're ready to, to bring it forward, we will. Um, but like I've, I've spoken with a few of you already, there's, there's a lot of. There's a lot of issues that go into something like this and we want to make sure we get it right, so.
I agree, gotta be careful what you wish for, you know, that's, that's the bottom line here. So just two quick things that I've been thinking about, just want to share them with you, uh, real quick. One is, um, again, you know, I'm a historian, so. I, I, I'd like to see some more historical markers in Miami Springs, we don't, there, there just seems to be a lack of, of those. Um, and, and secondly, and this was actually, my wife was the one that brought this to my attention. And, um, I've always thought that, uh, one of the things, th- this is not what she told me, but. One of the things that I always found a little lacking is I go, you know, visit other places, is you really don't know you're in Miami Springs. I mean, there's no welcoming sign, there's no, I mean, there, there are some signs, but, but you, if you drive kind of, you know, I, I, but they're not constant reminders, hey, you're in Miami Springs. You know, I said kidding around to her, I said, you know, maybe there ought to be a sign on, on the bridge coming in, uh, welcome to Miami Springs, uh, slow down and enjoy the view. Uh, but she says that's probably not gonna fly, but, but no, she thought about some lighting on the bridges. So, just some thoughts that have come through, I wanted to share those with you, and, and by the way, this was just tonight for sure. But, um, having worked with young people for three decades.
I think your mic went out, you need to turn on your mic.
Um, I'm sorry, and, uh, uh, having worked with young people for, for three decades. Um, I would like to consider at some point the idea of a youth advisory board for the city. I don't know if we've ever had one, but, um, just a thought, just something that it's percolating in my head, I'm not ready to make any. Presentations or anything like that, but I may be coming back on that regard. Um, and like Porky Pig used to say, that's all, folks.
All right, thank you. Um, I just, uh, wanna again, um, say, you know, um, really appreciate. Uh, Mayor Livy, uh, Daniela Levine-Cava coming to our meeting, I think that was just, um. Really, um, reaching out from her part to, to include us in the decision-making for the county as a whole, so we really appreciate that. And, um, William and I have been meeting, um, have several meetings with issues with Thirty-Sixth Street and, um, and. Other that once we have more information, we'll bring them to you. Um, but other than that, everyone have a great Memorial Day weekend and, um, looking forward, I'm sure the whole community is looking forward to our Memorial Day. Um, ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
Give her a go.
Meetings adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're still gonna decorate your car. For sure.
Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street issues.
For sure.
Getting more complicated.
Oh, God, yes. You know what? It's like the issues just keep rolling in.
The more, the more you dig, the more you, you find.
And then you solve all these and all of a sudden it's like more.
It was Frankie, like, are you still there?
Hey, Carol, how are you? Go ahead.
He can't see, he can't see you on YouTube. He's watching you there.
The building that what? Right, right, to find out details about it, it would be the city manager staff, yeah, they're the ones that can tell you what, you know, what's proposed and. Good night. Hey, good night, Jackie, thank you.
Bye, Big Car.
Night.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good night. That was a great. Mayor coming here.
Oh, yeah.
That was terrific.